All right, we can get started here. It could be a late night, so I will call to order the council meeting on November first, 2022, at seven thirty-two. The first thing I need to do is pledge allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, with all creation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Alder Allen.
Present.
Alder Radaprada.
Here.
Alder Beerheart.
Here.
Alder Hurst.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
That was here. Yeah, that was my guy.
Here, Richardson.
Also here.
Alder Strassman.
Here.
Alder Udell.
Here.
Alder Yellet.
Here.
You have a call.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is one appointment. We've got Patrick Wilson, who's here, if you want to come up for a spot on the library board. He just wanted to tell us a little bit about why you're interested in library board. That'd be great.
Hi, yes, thank you, Aaron. Hello, council. It's good to be here. I have loved living in Pittsburgh. I will tell everybody who asks that. It has been my favorite place to live so far. And so as part of, you know, enjoying the community, I feel that I should give back to the community. You know, it takes work to make these things as good as they are, and I see that you all do that, and I feel that I could be part of that and be useful. My background is I currently work at Epic, and I plan to for foreseeable future. At Epic, I do things like financial risk management and charging, not totally related to library board, but you know, you get to see all sorts of work and work on problems that you've never worked on before. So I feel like I can get plugged in quickly, figure out what's going on, and be useful to the community relatively quickly. And it's actually been interesting, telling people that I had planned on applying for this position, people get so excited about the libraries. You know, I tell them, I'm going to be on the library board, you know, kind of what do y'all think about that? And people just get so, so excited. They love the libraries here. Everybody's got great ideas. Everybody wants to tell me so many positive things about that. So, you know, being able to be part of that, I think I can get really excited about, you know, just seeing how excited everybody is about the library. So, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
All right, good. Any questions at all?
A move approval.
Moved by Gabriella, seconded by Randy. All in favor, say aye.
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 And with opposed, nay. All right, that's approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
painless. All right, then we will go to the public hearing on the council proposed amendments to the 2023 operating budget. Reminder for people who are speaking in person that you have a maximum of three minutes. You don't have to use the whole three minutes. We've got a couple people in chambers we'll start with. Linda Brewer, you would be first.
Thank you for allowing me to be here. So my name is Linda Brewer, and I'm on the True Advisory Committee. I've been on the committee since 2016. I'm the chair. And been in the community for over twenty years now. And thank you for all that you do. So I'm here to support consideration for including, as difficult as it is with the budget, for including a hundred percent position for the, our urban forester. So, and just a little bit about that. So while the city's, currently she is in the Parks Department, but works often across many other departments. Oftentimes in public works, planning commission, building inspection, there's been a lot of work in that department related to nuisance trees from the devastation of the Emerald Ash Bore. And that's been really huge in our community. Right now, she's kind of the Department of One, point eight is what she has, and she, there are no support staff. So she's recently updated the city's website. So you've heard a lot about what she does over the years. When we were here last year, and we talked a lot about it, and you have a lot of information. So I'm trying not to repeat what you've already, what you already know about what she does. I think a lot of times it isn't totally visible because it doesn't always happen just within the Parks Department. So while there are ten thousand trees in our, in our, on our city lands that she cares for, that she's required to care for by ordinance, there's a lot more to what she does in that position. So that's why I'm going to just, just expand very, very briefly on that. When I asked her about what she does, she also talks about some of the organization and support she does for volunteers. We have a lot of volunteers in our community who do a lot of time-intensive and labor-intensive work with clearing invasives out of prairies and around the burms that, that clean water for our water sources, for our retention ponds. We have volunteers who work in some of our woodlots that are public lands, clearing out invasive species. And the whole, the point of doing all those things is so that trees can propagate themselves, so that they can, it's a part of sustainability and, and propagating forests and, and desirable vegetation. So talks a lot about that. We have volunteers who she supports and coordinates, who help with getting seeds from native plants and reseeding those, and Anna helps with redistributing those in the community, in the community at targeted sites. And so all of these things are really essential to our city, to conservancy and sustainability. She does a wide variety of things, which range from taking some part in stormwater management to new land developments, both in-
Linda, I'm sorry I have to cut you off.
For public and private, okay.
I'm sorry.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
I gotta say, the only thing is-
Well, I'm sorry I have to be fair to everyone. I'm sorry. I hate this part.
All right. I should, I should learn to tie myself. Okay. All right, so I have a couple copies. Can I just-
Yeah, yeah, you can distribute those. Yeah, definitely.
I will do those strategically. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, next up is Tremaine Clardy.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here today. I'm Dr. Tremaine Clardy, and I'm very proud to serve the Verona Area School District as superintendent and also a proud resident of, of Pittsburgh. I can tell you that my, on personal note, my family has been welcomed to the, to the area, and it just really, really, the, the passion that I have for making sure that we have a very strong presence here and supporting the Pittsburgh area through the Verona Area School District. Today, I want to come and speak specifically about Budget Amendment Number Seven in support of the teen center. When you think about the development of the whole child, there's nothing more important than a partnership with the community and ensuring that both in-school and after-school activities are safe spaces where our students can continue to grow, learn, and thrive. And we see this partnership with the center as a strong method for ensuring that our students are, have that, have that ability. As you think about it, it's a snapshot of the, the, our students and what they have already committed to, and when they even know that this was a possibility. We have students from right down the street at Svenoaks Middle School, as well as multiple high school students that participated in the, in the survey, survey process. They learned how to do focus groups. They learned how to draw information from the community and working with their peers. And so they had that experience themselves, but when you heard firsthand the opportunity for a, a, a strong teen center in, in the area, I don't think words can speak to the level of passion and excitement that they have. So I wanted to speak on behalf of our students, on our staff, and understanding the, what this means for the, the future of our, of our students, and just really encourage the council to strongly consider Budget Amendment Number Seven, and think about the students that are on the other end of that, because they will prosper with that type of dedication and effort here in the Pittsburgh area. So on behalf of the students of the Verona Area School District, I just wanted to acknowledge and express gratitude for your consideration, and thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. I know we've got some people online. Scott, who do you want to go to first?
Eli Zarofsky.
All right, Eli, go ahead.
Hi, council. Thank you for considering Budget Amendment Number Seven. Today, I'm speaking in support of Budget Amendment Number Seven. So my name is Eli Zarofsky. I'm a pre-graduate student of Pittsburgh, went to Leopold, went to Cherokee, went to West. I used to live on Mileage Street, used to volunteer at the library, actually, the Pittsburgh Library. So really enjoyed like the, the stuff that is offered for youth in Pittsburgh. I see a teen center, being a part of the planning team, seeing the energy from the youth interns, just really moved me. It really showed me the importance of having a teen space in Pittsburgh, to just really build a really healthy community, and really add to just the vibrance of Pittsburgh. I think that one thing that really came out of our conversations with students was the importance of the teen center for mental health. So one thing we know from the Dane County Youth Assessment is that mental health among teens is not getting any better since the pandemic, unfortunately. But one thing that we know about teen center is that a teen center provides a safe space for teens. The fact that this study was done with teens, so it's as teens that are by teens for teens, you are actually going to be able to create a space of social connectedness, which is a pretty important protective factor that's been studied for adolescent brain and brain development concerning mental health. Not only that, you're able to allow teens to contribute to their communities, which is a way for youth to be empowered, engaged, and it'd be really meaningful in the actions that they provide back to the community to improve their mental and physical health. So I think that another thing to point out too about the really great survey that the teens interns did, is that this project is widely accepted by people on the survey. This is not a hard ask. And also, it's just been a continued process and supported by council. So I think it's just really important to reiterate that this is a really important project for teens. It shows teens that the city cares about them in their community, and it shows teens that the future is bright in Pittsburgh for teens. So I really urge council to support Budget Amendment Seven, to support the just continued building foundation of like a great youth experience in Pittsburgh. So again, thank you for your consideration, and I urge you to support Amendment Number Seven. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Eli. Who's next?
Kate Prehn.
Go ahead, Kate.
Mute.
You're muted, Kate.
I swear I hit on mute. Too bad you missed all the great things I just said. Hello, my name is Kate Prehn. I am a Pittsburgh resident. I have proudly lived in the Jamestown neighborhood for the last six and a half years. I am a nonprofit professional currently working at the Wisconsin Foundation and Alumni Association. And one of the things that I have loved to do is to mentor teens. So I have also been serving proudly as the co-chair of the Friends of the Pittsburgh Teen Center. So I, I echo the things that Eli and Dr. Clardy mentioned earlier. You know, we have, as they've both stated, we've made so much progress already. This is a project that is well-supported. We have neighbors and residents and local companies who would look forward to partnering and being a part of the teen center once it's up and running. And now, we're just really at the crossroads of making sure that the next steps that we take to build the Pittsburgh Teen Center are the correct steps, and that are the steps that will be the most sustainable, long-lasting, economical, and just right choices so we can get the most ROI for our teens. Now is the time for us to support Budget Amendment Number Seven. We've, as I mentioned, we have great, great momentum here already, and the fact that we have teens who are leading this work, we are not doing this work for the teens, but the teens are really leading the way here, and our team just has the pleasure of helping to support them. So please help us help our teens and support Budget Amendment Number Seven. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kate. Who's next, Scott?
Ojazwi Pasaki.
Hi, I'm Ojazwi Pasache, and I'm a senior at Verona Area High School. And I believe that Budget Amendment Seven is crucial for the development of the Pittsburgh Teen Center, as it will help ensure that this space truly reflects the needs of the youth. The Teen Center is crucial for our community because it will provide teens a space to be authentic and to explore their passions. It will also allow them to connect with people from diverse backgrounds, which can help them build a stronger sense of empathy and community, which I think is really important, especially as we come out of the pandemic. I think during that time, a lot of teens had a lot of mental distress, just because they couldn't interact with other people. And, you know, with school being online, that was really hard. And so I think the Teen Center will help us heal from that and will help us grow each other. And with this budget amendment, the team working on the Teen Center will have the necessary funding that they need to carry out their feasibility study. And I think that this is incredibly important because we need to hear from the teens and what kind of organizations and facilities they want at the Teen Center. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Karen Reese.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for your time tonight. I grew up in Pittsburgh, and I currently live on Post Road, however, on the Madison side of the street. But I do work at two nonprofits that do youth programming that engage Pittsburgh teens, and I also spend a lot of time walking around Pittsburgh and patronizing different establishments. So I'm really excited to support this Amendment Number Seven tonight. I do want to commend you all, Alder Maldonado, and so many others on the council who have supported this work so far. We are very far into this process, and it's so encouraging to see that teens are really building this from the ground up, that have been involved from day one, and will see this through to let us know what kind of programming they need. As we move through, you know, we hear a lot of negativity about what's happening in our neighborhoods, and so it's really great to hear some positive notes about the resources that Pittsburgh is creating to support the teens in Pittsburgh, which will have an impact all across Dane County. We're notorious around here for doing all kinds of studies, investing in research, but then forgetting that we need to support that, the research findings with actual dollars to implement the study. And what I really like about what's happening here is the slow and careful process that you all have outlined here, to make sure that not only you're building up and setting the right aims for what the center should look like, but you're also looking to think carefully about who should be engaged and who can help run this teen center in a way that will really meet the needs of our teens. There's no shortage of research that suggests that the more options we have like this in our community to support teens means, you know, better for all of us all around, a better society, a better community, and teens that grow into adults that want to stay here and work here and play here. And that's what we really need right now, especially as our schools are struggling to find full funding, and after-school programs are struggling with funding. This is a huge step, and I think really puts Pittsburgh on the map for doing this the right way. So please, I urge you to continue your support and fund Amendment Number Seven, and I really look forward to following this work into the future. So thanks for your time tonight. Have a good night.
All right, thank you. Who's next, Scott?
Awafati.
Hi, my name is Awafati. I'm part of the internship and the planning committee of building the Teen Center. And the reason I'm here today to support Budget Amendment Seven is because I really feel like there's a strong need for the Teen Center, especially in the area that it's going to be in. It's going to help and affect a lot of POC children and their upbringing, which I think is really important. Me personally, I grew up going into a community center on the north side of Madison, and I'm a firm believer that it had to do a lot with my development and the person I became today. And I would like to see that for a lot of teens in Madison and in Pittsburgh, because I think it'd be really crucial and helpful. So yeah, that's exactly why I'm here today. I think within the pandemic happened and everything that happened in the last three years, it's like now's the perfect time to build a teen center. We need places that teens can go for free and get mental health services, or just like career development, things to get them off the street, things to give them something to be productive about, rather than school and sports or whatever it is, because after school, you have to have a place to go. And a lot of people don't have that. And in Madison right now, I don't know any areas that are doing this type of need, like catering to teens in this type of way. So I think that's why it's really crucial, and that's why I'm here today, to support Budget Amendment Seven. So thank you for having me.
All right, thank you.
Nabila Mao.
Hi, my name's Nabila Mao. I live in Madison. I'm kind of in the neighborhood near King James. I think it's really crucial to build a teen center because I have a lot of younger siblings, and they don't really have anywhere to go after school. They don't really have any places to get like resources from, and as much as school is helpful, it only goes so far. And at the end of the day, you do come back home. So I think that having a place where you're able to get these resources and where you're able to get, have a place to go to for all kinds of things, I think, is really important. And, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Who would be next, Scott?
Hannah Bligh.
My name's Hannah Bligh, and I go to UW Madison, and I'm from the Kettle Creek neighborhood in Verona, but I was originally from Pittsburgh. And I think it's really important to create a teen center and support Budget Amendment Seven, because there's not a very big sense of community, and there's only like so much you can do for teens without going above and beyond that. And there's not as many resources for teens that can be allocated without funds. So I think it's really important that it's a free way for people to build a sense of community and get together.
All right, thank you. Who's next, Scott?
Farhaio Ali. You are muted.
I'd first like to excuse my voice. I got, I got sick, so please ignore that. My name is Farhaio Ali. I'm a freshman at UW Madison, and I grew up in Pittsburgh. And I think that having this teen center and having funding for this amendment is very vital in child development. It's very vital in having a community, a sense of community for these children. And that area, specifically King James, that area is predominantly black. And I think that it's time that we invest in our black youth, and all children deserve a space to go to where they can feel safe, where they can get resources and the help that they need to prosper. And Madison and Pittsburgh and Verona and all these cities, they're lacking in places where children can go and meet like-minded children, like-minded families, and just grow as a community. I think it's very important to have it. And so that's why I'm here today to support this amendment.
All right, thank you. Hope you feel better quickly.
Haney Suliman.
Hi, my name is Haney Suliman. I'm also a freshman at UW Madison. I'm from the Pittsburgh area, more specifically King James. And I believe that this funding is very important because not only would it provide a space for the youth to be creative and be themselves, but also create leaders, leaders, like future leaders. And someone who has been a part of like multiple clubs and like school and stuff, I wish that like, you know, I had a space to go to after school, and I feel like this would be a perfect place for the youth. So, and that's why I'm here to support the amendment today.
All right, thank you.
And Iklis next.
Hi, Ahmed Claus Mohammed, and I am a freshman at M A T C. And I recently moved to Pittsburgh my senior year of high school. And one of the main reasons why I believe that a teen center would be very beneficial is that I feel like it would definitely allow students to get in touch, like Awaf had said before, like professional help and counseling, whether it be academic counseling or personal counseling, and just give students the opportunity in, to go to college that wouldn't have been given the opportunity without the teen center, and just be given advice and guidance in how they can just better their future, and just seeing other black people that they can look up to, and not just black people, but people of color in general. So that's why I support the amendment.
All right, thank you. And those are all the people live. You have some videos, I believe, don't you?
I do, sir.
All right, can you play those?
Hello, my name is Ryan Holesman, and I live in the Renaissance on the Park neighborhood in northwest Pittsburgh. I'm a parent, Pittsburgh resident, and big supporter of the Teen Center Initiative. Providing spaces for our youth is both a public safety and public health issue. I speak to you today to urge you to support the Amendment Seven to the municipal budget. In 2021, Pittsburgh hired Equity by Design to engage the community by surveying almost four hundred adults and youth and leading focus groups with a total of seventy-five youth. This study included eight teen insert interns and had staffing support from UW Health and UW Madison Division of Extension. This effort was dearly important to me, and in September of 2021, I was able to successfully fundraise enough funds to cover the work of one of those interns. The results of their survey were overwhelmingly in support of the Teen Center. This year, the design study is in progress, and inclusion of youth and community voices will make sure that those designs reflect the needs of those who the center will serve. Inclusion and equity in the design process will create a space that feels welcoming, and as a gathering space, the neighborhood will be excited to utilize. The feasibility study that is proposed under Amendment Seven is equally critical in the process of the Teen Center, identifying which youth-serving organizations would lead programming, tenant rental arrangements, options for cost and size, and utilization of grant funding for subsidizing costs. These are all incredibly important determinations that will be essential in establishing the Teen Center as a sustainable and long-term resource for our citizens. The council and the community have continuously supported the Teen Center effort, and many individuals like myself, companies, and organizations have committed time and funding to support this project. I urge the council to support Amendment Seven and to once again reaffirm their dedication to making sure that the needs of our youth in our community are addressed, and that we will make the investment in their success and well-being a priority. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Taylor, and I live in Madison. I'm speaking to you today to advocate for Budget Amendment Number Seven regarding the Pittsburgh Teen Center project. As someone who has a background in public health and who works with youth in community outreach initiatives, this teen center isn't just a community development project. It's a public health project. And according to the Wisconsin Council on Children and Families, Dane County has some of the worst racial and health disparities in the nation. Depression, anxiety, and suicide ideation and substance abuse have continued to increase, particularly among youth of color, youth with disabilities, and LGBTQ youth. In particular, youth who have been exposed to adverse childhood experiences, or ACEs, such as violence, abuse, poverty, or homelessness, have long-term health consequences that continue through adulthood. And the burden of ACEs actually results in the loss of billions of dollars each year due to healthcare costs to treat these consequences from ACEs. For example, ACE attributable costs for treating depression and anxiety alone totals over eighty-two billion dollars annually here in the United States. There's an immediate need for safe spaces for teens to gather safely that foster physical and mental health, as well as social and emotional well-being. When we talk about moving the needle, or going upstream, or addressing the social determinants of health, it's community projects like this teen center that can give us the desired outcomes we want to see for our youth, and it is an investment for the future of our community. When we talk about how to address adverse childhood experiences, it's giving youth opportunities to build resiliency through peer support, confidence, trusting relationships with non-parent adults, and opportunities for self-expression and problem-solving. We can simultaneously give teens safe opportunities to engage with their peers while also improving their health and economic and educational opportunities. Budget Amendment Number Seven is extremely important because it will ensure that this project is well-researched. Budget amendment number seven is extremely important because it will ensure that this project is well researched and that the community continues to be involved. Particularly youth involvement from start to finish. If you looked through the thorough and extensive report by Equity by Design created from phase one of this project, the Community Engagement Study. You can see that the residents of Pittsburgh, especially teens, support this project because this center can be a vital space for teen health and well-being. Thank you.
I'm the CEO and founder of Equity by Design. I was hired to do the City of Pittsburgh Teen Center. And I'm happy to say that we completed successfully that engagement project. We had over four hundred respondents and we had eighty one. Focus group participants. When we think about the teen center and what's happening overwhelmingly, we had. A lot of support for the teen center. Eighty-five percent of folks supported the teen center. And we had a very small percentage of people, as you can see, not supporting the teen center. So that is great, great news. Where was the biggest issue is that people were concerned about. Can we support operationally? Can we support the teen center? So how are we gonna learn that answer? How are we gonna find that out? We need a feasibility study. You all have budget amendment number seven before you tonight. I want you to approve it because this is where. The rubber hits the road. People support the teen center. They're interested in the teen center, but in order to make the right decision. About what size and scale. What does it cost? And only a feasibility study can do that. We're already two to the thirds of the way there. You already did an engagement. Uh, study. You already have a design study in place. This is the last piece, feasibility. And so in order to make an informed decision and a thoughtful decision, you need to have the numbers. So please approve amendment number seven. Also, what also is important for you all to understand and know. Is that the median age of your community is age thirty four. Further, twenty-two percent of your residents are under the age of eighteen. So when you are thinking about as council members, how should you invest your dollars? You definitely wanna be investing your dollars in the young. Because when we talk about business growth, business expansion, new ideas, um. Money being spent, it is from these demographics and you want these demographics to be connected. Feel like they belong, have relationships, feel like this is their community because of people. And young people in particular feel like this is their community and they have a relationship with that said community, they are going to take care of that community. And they are gonna do everything in their power to help sure that they not only grow and thrive, but so too does the community. And we know what it looks like when people are disengaged and isolated. And a teen center is a great way to create that connection and that care and that relationships. So please. Take that last step, approve amendment number seven so that you can find out what will it take to invest. And operate a teen center so that you can make an informed decision, but you can also support your constituents. Thank you so much and have a good night.
And that's all you have, right Scott? All right, we've got a bunch of emails as well. And these went to all the council members, so you all saw these. Josh Jenkins from Pittsburgh wrote in support of amendment seven, which is the teen center that a lot of people have spoken to. Andrea Scott from Pittsburgh is also in support of amendment seven. Caitlin Eunice from Pittsburgh is in writing in support of amendment seven. Sam Voorhees from Pittsburgh is in support of amendment seven. Franny Lyons from Pittsburgh is in support of amendment seven. Paul Fever from Pittsburgh is in support of amendment seven. Brenda Hofer from Pittsburgh is in support of amendment three. That is the urban forester position to go to full-time. Will Bussey from Pittsburgh is in support of amendment six, which is a sustainability plan and amendment nine. Which I believe that's the Swan Creek, um, the more funding or the replacing the funding for Swan Creek. Troy Klein from Pittsburgh is in support of amendments eight and nine, which is the pilot. Vegetation and street medians project and the funding for the Swan Creek monitoring station. Sue Fever from Pittsburgh is in support of increasing the tree advisory committee meetings from six to eight. Increase the urban forester position to the full-time position and reducing the median mowing and maintenance budgets. Uh, Rita Hendricks from Pittsburgh is, she's about, I guess she didn't really say any specific amendment, just said. Hold the line and don't increase taxes. Ron French from Pittsburgh, uh, he actually wrote what he want, if he's in support or not of all the amendments. So amendment one, he is in supportive. Amendment two, he is not in supportive. Amendment three, he supports. Amendment four, he supports. Amendment five, he's a support, he supports. Amendment six, he supports. Amendment seven, he supports. Amendment eight, he supports. And number nine, he supports. And Judith Steller from Pittsburgh is in support of the sustainability plan. As well as she says all nine amendments, but specifically number nine, sustainability or the sustainability plan, that's number nine, but. All right, that is all that I have. Seeing no one else here, I can. Close the public hearing and move on to the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Jay. Sentenced by Shannon. Anything that people wanna do separately? See nothing. Go to a vote. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Anyone oppose nay? That is approved. Administrator's report.
Good evening, everyone. A few events uh regarding uh public. Uh, participation in uh two of those and then one other event uh for the public coming up here. Metro uh bus is holding or Metro Transit is holding a virtual public hearing. On November ninth at six P M in regards to their uh route study. Uh, again, that's a virtual option only and you can register to attend that public hearing at mymetrobus.com. Slash public hearing. Uh, the uh is going to be a community engagement meeting on the Terra Vasa Egg Park. Uh, next week, November tenth at five thirty P M here in the council chambers. And then finally, uh, the senior center will be hosting a Veterans Day event at eleven A M on November eleventh. Despite the weather out there this week, uh, the park shelters are in the process of being winterized for the upcoming cold weather. Uh, so rentals of those shelters will be ceasing. And then finally, uh, as an informational item for the council, the request for proposal for the staffing and organizational study was. Uh, published uh last week on Friday. Uh, proposals from companies are due December first. Any questions for me?
Great, Dave.
Chad, uh, I noticed tonight the window was broken in the Jamestown Heagle Shelter. Can you find out if that happened Saturday night?
Yeah, sure, I can contact the police.
Right Parks Department, uh, because they would have been the one that found it.
Yeah, yeah, I'll find out.
All right, seeing nothing else, we can go right to new business. We got a couple of direct roles. Uh, this first one is finance. Randy, do you wanna do the motion?
Uh, yes, uh, motion to approve resolution R dash two one one dash two two approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Pittsburgh. And International Association of Firefighters, Local Three Eleven, acting officer in charge compensation.
Sentenced by Jade, the finance approved?
Finance approved.
Are you gonna speak to it or you gonna let chief?
No, she's going to speak to the the one and two.
All right, great.
All right, so we have a uh um referral uh for the acting officer in charge compensation. What it allows us to do is place a lieutenant into the officer in charge position. Uh, which is a position outside of their job description. It uh affords them uh compensation for that role. Um, we don't use it all that often, but when we do, it's nice to be able to to address the the compensation factor. This is going to be a memorandum of understanding. Uh, it does have an expiration so that with the next contract, we can negotiate in the event that it's not fiscally sustainable.
Questions at all, Jay?
This doesn't have anything to do with the letter we received from Local Three Eleven last week, right?
Uh, I don't, I'm not aware.
Police department.
That, so I'm gonna say no.
Funding coming to cover the seven point five percent.
Uh, it, this is a a position that we would typically have uh funding for anyway. Uh, that being the O I C position. It's when that uh position cannot uh be staffed with. Somebody from our paid-on-call, paid-on-premises ranks. So and somebody from our career lieutenant ranks then steps up into that position. And that's one of the reasons why it's an M O U is because that gives us the ability to monitor this over the next two years. And be able to ensure that it is fundable.
Any other questions?
Did that answer your question or did you want some more information?
So how much money we're talking?
Oh, uh, so I can give you a. Yeah, so uh let's give a a per uh instant situation, uh probably right around a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars. An instance, I'll probably use it once or twice a month.
Anything else? Uh, all right, then we can go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose nay? All right, that's approved. Randy, do you wanna do a motion for the next one?
Uh, yes, I uh, motion to approve resolution R dash two one three dash two two authorizing. Or authorization for the new fire incident records management software.
Second.
Sentenced by Jade, the finance approved?
Finance approved.
All right, chief, do you wanna explain this one?
Yeah, absolutely. What we're doing is we're moving away from our existing records management system. Uh, they were unresponsive to some of the support that we required, uh, reports that we needed to be able to produce. Uh, we looked at other varieties of reporting software. We found one that comes highly recommended by a number of of fire departments in the state, uh, Green Bay, Janesville, Nina Minasha. Um, and so we're confident that it is the product that we're looking for. And it actually comes in below the amount that we had budgeted for next year, uh, to the tune of a savings of about four thousand dollar.
Dave.
Chief, this, this was the one we just approved last, last year, right?
Uh, two years ago, yes, moving into it and. Yeah, and so we thought we were moving into something that was gonna be seamless because uh the existing. Uh, system that we had in place about three years ago, uh, we went with the same parent company. And we were finding that they, what they had suggested that they were gonna be able to provide, they just couldn't. And so we needed to move away from it.
Thank you.
Jay.
Yeah, uh, so I use software, of course, in my business and. When I've had to change vendors, one of the challenges has always been. How do I get the old data out of the old software into the new software? And then, you know, at some point in the future, if you decide to go with a different vendor, do they have the capacity to export that to something else?
Yeah, great question. And that is something that we demanded with the the addition of a new uh platform. And I should use caution when I say software. It's web-based. Obviously, there's software associated with it, but not on our end. So it's something that they will be able to to address uh on their side and be able to transfer the data over. But we made that their problem.
Well, sometimes that works and sometimes it doesn't because um there can be copyright issues if if the. If the old software company says, we don't want you to take this data. The, I guess one question is, where's the actual data stored? Whose server is it on?
Yeah, it's on the cloud, so it's primarily with them.
Yeah.
Uh, and then, so here's, here's what I needed to do in this situation. I absolutely had to work with the recommendations of other departments. To see how that transfer went with them. And we're pleased to announce that that was much easier than what we were working with currently. So, I, yeah, it, there's a, there's a certain amount of trust that goes into it and that's part of the agreement.
Anyone else?
So this is practically an annual subscription to have access to this application. This is what we're doing.
Yeah, wha- what we need to be able to do is we need a uh, an approval. Um, this will allow us to start transferring that data. We would like to have it transferred before the end of November. So we can work with it through December and uh address um the uh, the actual contract going into twenty twenty-three. They're providing the uh, the platform to us for two months until twenty twenty-three.
Anyone else? All right, we can go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose nay? All right, that's approved too.
Thank you.
All right, going to committee, commission reports, goes up through these, plant commission, anything?
Uh, nothing to report. I believe we meet November fifteenth.
All right, public works.
Um, I would just report they're, they're going through, beware of the street sweeper out there, uh, slow, slow-moving vehicle. And uh, the, they are going through and doing their quarterly uh sanitary sewer clean outs in areas that have given them problems.
All right, plant commission, or park commission, I mean, perks.
Uh, we are meeting on November fourth.
All right, library warden?
Uh, we didn't, we have not met since the last meeting.
All right, commissioning engineer well?
Uh, we've raised forty-six thousand of the fifty for the, for the patio and we expect a R F P for the design to go out in November or December, Chad. Does that sound right?
Great, R C C.
Uh, just one update about the amount of stuff that we collected at the last recycling event. Uh, nine hundred and fifteen pounds of CPUs. Two thousand seven hundred and five pounds of electronics, one thousand seventy pounds of freon items. Seven hundred and thirty-three pounds of monitors, two thousand two hundred and nine pounds of TVs, two thousand nine hundred and twenty pounds of steel. A hundred and fifty-four pounds of wire for a total of ten thousand seven hundred and six pounds. Uh, we had a total of a hundred and seven cars come through for that section of the recycling. We also collected two point three eight tons of paper. Uh, which was confidential shredding as well and it looks like, uh. A hundred pounds of unwanted expired medication in the med drop. So, pretty extraordinary event.
Great. What about T T C?
No report.
All right, Sita?
Yes, we got a update from Ned Hoyt, who's one of the um developers of Terrace Point and on Ochala. And basically he said there was a five percent increase in rent for Terrace Point. He also said that um for the apartments there, they only had sixteen days when apartment was not actually had someone in it. And that just shows you the market is is really tight. I mean, sixteen days is very, very low. Um, hospitality is needed in the northern space. The southern part of it is all rented, rented out. Uh, for Ochala Drive, a hundred and seventy market rate apartments should be ready to go in June of twenty twenty-three. Um, barring any mishaps or anything with the supply chain or I'm hearing there's some easement issues. Um, now, um, when you're dealing with that. One of the future concepts is the um Avalon. Which would be a hundred and seventy-three market rate apartments that should start twenty twenty-three, be finished in twenty twenty-four. A new idea that they have that they're still um trying to work their way through is to have a project that's gonna be artist lofts. Which is gonna be a mixed community that's gonna focus on the arts. So basically you would have a lot of apartments like up top, two, three bedrooms, but then you'll have spaces for people to actually, you know, do art-type work. So they're still flushing um that one out. Um, they still are predicting um strong rental growth um due to overall inflation. Um, we talked about a little bit about you, you know, where's construction is going. And three of the things that they're looking at, that investors look at is the interest rate, the investor sentiment overall and improved construction pricing. So right now, it looks, it looks pretty good. Um, let's see here. And I think, um. That's it right now.
All right, thank you. Agro affairs?
Uh, nothing to report. Again, we meet on the fifteenth of November.
All right, EMS?
Um, nothing to report, but we do meet um on the seventeenth.
All right, bike committee?
No report.
Tree advisory, Kenny?
No report.
Landmarks preservation?
No report.
Housing advisory?
No report.
Healthy neighborhoods?
We meet tomorrow, woo-hoo.
Ooh, exciting. All right, uh, finance committee, Randy?
Uh, motion to approve resolution R dash one nine nine dash two two amending the twenty. Uh, motion to approve resolution R dash one, nine, nine, dash, two, two, amending the twenty twenty-two general fund and library fund budgets, increase gasoline costs.
Second.
Sent by Gabriella, did finance approve?
Finance approved.
And what is this about?
Uh, given the price of gasoline and diesel that has increased significantly during twenty twenty-two, the amount of gasoline used by the city is difficult to reduce without impacting service levels. Budget savings from staff vacancies, waived disability premiums, reductions in training and travel from, uh, due to COVID can be used to absorb the increases in the, in the gasoline prices. This resolution amends the twenty twenty-two general fund and library fund budgets to correct the difference.
All right, any questions at all? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose name? That one's approved, next one, Randy?
Okay, motion to approve resolution R dash two, zero, four, dash, two, two, amending the twenty twenty-two general fund budget sustainability plan, phase two.
Second.
Sent by Gabriella, and did finance approve this one?
Finance approved.
And you wanna speak to this one?
Uh, sure. Again, this body passed, uh, funding to create a sustainability plan, phase, phase one in twenty twenty-one. The resolution continues the sustainability planning effort by utilizing twenty-five thousand, thousand dollars in staff vacancy budget savings in twenty twenty-two to fund phase two of the plan. An additional twenty-five thousand dollars will, would allow us to expand the plan's scope and increase community engagement. Uh, if the resolution is approved, council president, excuse me, council proposed amendment number six to the twenty twenty-three budget would clean up the twenty twenty-three budget and remove ten thousand dollars in redundant tid closure funding allocated to this project in twenty twenty-three.
All right, any questions, Dave?
We passed last year, we were, we were going to get a study. Uh, I don't believe that's been done yet. And it seems like we're gonna, you know, I'm not opposed, but cart ahead of the horse. And it seems to me what, you know, our sustainability is the city use. My, my fear is we're gonna be trying to, now trying to, you know, tell residents that they have to do this or that, you know, and, and I, while I'm fine with the city sustainability, I, I do not want anything mandated or tried to be forced down the, you know, down our residents' throats. So that's, that's all I wanted to say about it.
All right, Gabriel, go ahead.
I, just to respond to that quickly, um, the, this, this plan has not started yet. It's, again, it's always a staff funding issue. But just to clarify for Dave, this is not implementing anything on the citizens. This is very much a city planning, um, how we are going to, you know, do our city planning and city operations to be sustainable. But there'll also be community engagement around the process. So, um, yeah, I think it should be a really interesting, uh, interesting effort.
All right, anyone else? All right, seeing nothing else, we can go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose name? That one's approved, next one, Randy?
All right, motion to approve resolution R, R dash two, zero, eight, dash, two, two, amending the twenty twenty-two fact TV budget, dash, cameras.
Second.
Sent by Gabriella, did finance approve?
Finance approved.
And you want to speak to this one?
Uh, sure, uh, the resolution is amending the twenty twenty-two budget, uh, fact TV, uh, two staff cameras that are due for replacement in twenty twenty-three, uh, due to ongoing camera issues and budget constraints in twenty twenty-three. Uh, fact TV is asking to replace both cameras this year. Uh, the purchase would include the two new cameras, batteries, chargers, et cetera. Uh, a budget amendment is requested to use the vacant production assistance unused salary and benefits between the higher hires to pay for the two camera kits. Total cost of replacing the two cameras and accessories is ten thousand dollars.
All right, yeah, so there had some vacancies.
Right.
Throughout the year, and they're using that money to purchase these.
Accelerated.
Any questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose name? That one's approved, next one, Randy?
Uh, motion to approve ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-two dash O, dash, four, zero, updating Pittsburgh purchasing poli- policy to allow administrative approval of settlement claims as recommended by insurance carrier by creating Pittsburgh ordinance section, ten dash three, zero, seven, thirteen.
Second.
Sent by Gabriella, and did finance approve this?
Finance approved.
Would you like to speak to this or one of our other illustrious guests in the?
Um, I can, I can make an attempt and then they, they can add, uh, was he referring to you?
Why is Misty laughing right now?
No, actually, why, why, yeah, actually, why don't, why don't you? You, you summed it up so well in finance, yeah.
See, I should have just kept my smile to myself. So, uh, the city is essentially self-insured for the small insurance claims up to thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars per incident, depending on the type, which is, a settlement of an insurance claim is a little bit different of an animal than, say, paying a vendor for services or a piece of equipment. So the proposal is to make the thresholds the same as our purchasing policy, but to make it very clear that these are actually authority for staff to settle the insurance claims. Just make sure that staff is operating within the authority that you guys give us. So if the claim as recommended by the insurance company that we should pay, if it's less than five thousand, staff can just process it. Five thousand to twenty-five thousand, it has to get the mayor's approval. And twenty-five thousand and above, it has to get council approval, just like all of our other more traditional purchases.
I think the key is that our insurance company recommends that we pay it. And so we're not just deciding we're gonna pay it against advice from our insurance company or someone else. Gabriel?
It just occurred to me, is there a way for us to notate that in finance reports when they do come through that, the similar way every time? So we know that it's an insurance claim? Do you understand what I'm saying? I guess I'm not sure how they come through now. Maybe they already are done that way, but.
So right now they would come through, I'm sorry if I may. Uh, right now they come through on the detail of all checks that the city issues, that finance committee sees, as well as that's on the council agenda. So it's just a matter of what account number it would go to. So if, maybe if I show you which account numbers to look for, we could do it that way. I'd prefer not to have a whole separate section if we don't.
Oh, no, 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 sorry, I didn't mean a different section. I just meant like just some sort of standard language so that it calls out for the finance committee and the council that are reading the finance reports that it's an insurance.
Yeah.
Claim.
Like insurance claim.
But yes, no extra reports, please, no, 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 that's not what I meant.
Jay?
How, how often do we have claims under five thousand dollars?
Often enough, I mean, this started with us internal staff kinda talking about do we have the authority or do we not? Was for one that's relatively small. So not, I wouldn't say every, all the time, but there's definitely some every year.
Like one a year, five a year, ten a year?
I would guess, just in the fifteen months I've been in this role, maybe five a year. I mean, the one that got staff talking was for three hundred and seventy-six dollars. So we've spent more staff time talking about, can, do we have the authority to just pay this as recommended by the insurance company? Then, you know, the claim is worth, so.
Do we have a specific budget line item for claims like this?
Misty?
We do, so we have a separate, it's called an internal service fund for all of our insurance. And there's a separate kinda section of numbers, cuz we split out this, uh, self-insured retention liability for general government, public safety, highway, library, that stuff. So it's kind of one section in there.
Got you.
Anything else? All right, seeing nothing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose name? Uh, is approved, anything else you wanna mention on finance, Randy?
No, I don't believe so.
Anything on personnel?
No report.
Anything on public safety?
No report.
All right, then we can go to unfinished business. Randy, do you wanna do the motion?
Motion to approve resolution R dash one, eight, six, dash, two, two, adopting special rules for twenty twenty-three budget adoption.
Second.
Sent by Jay, and Misty, are you speaking to this?
Yes, please.
All right.
So I'll start by saying that the bulk of our budget process for this evening is outlined in the ordinances, um, which I believe is included in the supporting document for this resolution. The hiccup that we have is that the ordinances don't really contemplate that at the end of the night, we might not meet levy limits. So we needed to create supplemental procedures that would allow us to go back and make sure that our budget meets levy limits when allowed or when required at the end. So the proposed process that's in front of you is very similar to what we've done the last several years. I did make two proposed changes. One is to just clarify that withdrawn amendments cannot be reconsidered during future votes. And then if you make a motion or you second, that doesn't count as a time speaking. So those were the two changes that I'm proposing. I overview kind of of how this would go. So we would go through each of the amendments one by one. You each have a limit of two times that you're allowed to speak per amendment, right, two, Valerie? Yep. Yep, it's a total of five minutes speaking in total for the amendment. Council is able to extend that time speaking in five minute increments, as you so choose. But that first five minutes is the clock, and it's for all, everybody speaking, not each person individually speaking for five minutes. So you'll have that opportunity, you can make the amendments to the amendments that you would like to, all of that voting would happen. But in theory, since we had that very thorough conversation at committee of the whole last week, most of the discussion should already be done. And at this point, we're ready to just vote. So I'll go one by one through the amendments, Aaron will lead that, lead us through that. We'll take a short break or a short recess after we get through it the first time. I will call our city clerk, make sure that her and I match, uh, so that we have the right numbers and records. And then if we pass, or if the budget meets levy limits, we will move on. If it doesn't, we can go back through and reconsider certain amendments that were proposed before. So Aaron will collect, and you guys can all say, I wanna reconsider this one, this one, and this one. They don't, doesn't have to be all of them, we don't have to do them in order. When you say which ones you wanna do, we'll collect that list. And then Aaron will walk us through that exact same process for all the revotes, for just the ones that you guys want to reconsider. Once we get through that, we'll take another break, I'll call Tracy, we'll make sure we balance or we don't. And then we can keep doing that as many times as we need to, until we have a budget that meets levy limits. Once we meet levy limits and we can move on to that next piece, each one of you has an opportunity for a closing statement. If you wanna talk about what you like or did not like about the budget, or how your overall thoughts are about it. And then we will vote on the resolution that adopts the, adopts the budget, adopts the fee schedule, and sets the property tax levy for these upcoming tax bills.
And then I'll just add, I know in the past people asked to do a roll call on all votes, so I'll plan to have a roll call for voting on all the amendments as well. So we have that. Any questions for Misty at all? Gabriel?
Uh, this is more of a, a proposal for the council, since we often increase to ten minutes. And given the fact that we have a shorter agenda than normal, I wonder if we could propose just making the minimum amount of time, we can discuss ten minutes, and then we can add a five minutes on going forward.
Second.
If I may.
Yeah.
So that is actually in the ordinance. And it specifically says that a separate vote must be taken for each added extension.
Okay, so we have to do it, okay.
I think so, sorry.
That's ordinance, yeah. Anything else? Valerie? Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Well, our, our ordinance indicates that, uh, initial debate is limited to five minutes. And, uh, there must be additional, uh, extent, votes for each additional extension. But I think in the past, they've extended by ten, in ten minute intervals. Was it always five? I, I do think that the, the council can choose, I think the initial extension has to be five minutes, but I think if the council wants to agree to extend it further in larger chunks, you certainly can. Doesn't specify additional extension, the limit on the additional extension. So I think if that's something the council wants to consider, you can take that under advisement. But we are limited to the initial five minute discussion and five minute extension for the first time.
I think the, uh, consideration in the ordinances it mentions, it may be extended for a total of ten minutes, i.e., in five minute increments and then subsequent votes thereafter. So we may be, you know, a bit of gray area there.
All right, well, we'll just do it five in increments, and we can look at that if it needs to be cleared, cleared up in the future. All right, anything else? All right, so.
So the, what we're approving right now, according to this, is that, uh, if we extend the discussion, it's gonna be in increments of ten minutes. That's, that's what this says right here. This document that we're approving tonight in this resolution. It's under step four D, uh, C.
It does say that, yep. So it starts with five minutes, just like before, but then it's, goes in ten minute increments after that. So right, that is an inconsistency. So that is a step that we set, that supplements the ordinances. So we're able to keep that one if you'd like, but I don't think we can override the ordinance in the original go around.
So I guess if we're extending it, the person making the motion can decide if they want it to be five or ten, you know, so you would say? All right, sometimes you know you're close to the end, and sometimes you know you're not close to the end. All right, so seeing nothing else, we can vote on the special rules. All in favor of approving the special rules, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose name? All right, that is approved. And then I believe we need to do a motion at least to start this off.
Sure, you're talking about item B then, right?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, motion to approve resolution R dash one, eight, seven, dash, two, two, adopting the twenty twenty-three annual city operating budget.
Second.
Sent by Dave. And so again, we'll go through this, I'll have whoever made the amendment do the motion. I will give that person the option to speak one of their two times if they would like to, don't have to. And kinda like, you know, you've, we've done it past years, you've done this before. I make sure you're raising your hand, you only get two options to speak. Don't interrupt other people, or that could come as one of your two times speaking. And hopefully it goes pretty smooth. So we can start going through the amendments. Amendment one is Julia.
Good, thank you. So I move a motion to approve, um, to reduce a median mowing and maintenance budget by twenty thousand dollar.
Second.
Sent by Gabriella, and do you wanna speak?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, okay. So this amendment was, I introduce this amendment to, in order to, um, find some funding to, um, the, uh, to cover, amendment number three, that is increase, um, forester for point eight to, uh, full-time position, to increase eight hours more. So, um, so this is the, and also to, um, to have the discussion about, uh, for future, if we, this, this amendment is not approved, also to have a discussion for future conversation about how we're gonna reduce the median mowing funds and, and how we can, uh, start talking, uh, replacing or converting some of the gray sea areas, um, to a more sustainable platform like native plants or clover or, or the, uh, low mow alternative. So, because, uh, yes, at, at the beginning, it's gonna be kind of, uh, it's not gonna be cheap for the city, but in the long term, the city, um, uh, can reduce this, uh, this cost significantly in the long term. That's it.
All right, Dave, I have you on the list next, go ahead.
Yeah, um, so we had night, um, Jaren said we mowed nineteen times this summer. You know, it wasn't overly wet, you know, if I just look at how many times I mowed my lawn. And essentially they had a budget for twenty-three. What happens if we have the, the wetter year and we need more mowings? Where, where's the, where's the money gonna come from, you know, if we reduce this budget?
All right, Jim, go ahead.
My question, and, um, Misty, please correct me if I'm wrong, is, um, this contingency is different from any other contingency when you have a building. And I believe that this contingency takes in the fact that we are expanding. So if we all of a sudden get, uh, more mediums and everything else like that, this is what that money is for. So I, I kinda wanna hear more, why should we take that money away? And what happens when we actually do increase our development? Am I on that right track?
Are you, are you done speaking? All right, all right, go ahead, Misty.
I'd say, yeah, that's my understanding, is that back when the contract was signed in two thousand and twenty-one, you know, we didn't know how much we were gonna grow, how much additional area would need to be maintained. So that's what that contingency is for. Yes, the number of mowings and such that Alder Herbst talked about as well, but also the growth in the city and the additional mediums that needed to be maintained.
Do you wanna use your second? This would be your second one, yep.
So, okay, so, uh, also, uh, as you mentioned, I, do you recall that Scott Endall also mentioned that there will be another alternative? Maybe, um, to use one of the LTE, LTE? Yes, um, in the future to, to do this job for the city. So maybe we can consider that option two for future budgets.
Gabriel?
So I'm supportive of this amendment, um, well, in part because I, I think we should spend that money on the forester. But also I, I do think that reducing the budget puts some pressure on us to replace some of this vegetation with something more sustainable that doesn't require us to be mowed, which I think pairs well, unintentionally pairs well with my amendment number eight to have some money to pilot that. But, you know, the budget did go in last year, or I guess this current year, twenty twenty-two budget, it was seventy-two thousand five hundred for mowing. was 72,500 for mowing contracting. In 2023, it's 94,250. That's more than a $20,000 increase. That's a 30% increase in the budget. And like, I understand that we did add some land, but we didn't add 30% more medians in that period of time. I think it, you know, represents an inflation in the cost, which is only going to get worse and worse and worse. We have to find a way to, to deal with these medians that's more sustainable long-term. And so I think reducing this does, you know, make us make decisions about where we mow, where we don't, which places we want to, you know, choose to do something different in this current year. And as we grow and change, add roads like West Lacy Road, I don't think we should add turf grass from the outset. We should add something different that does not require mowing every, or these like regular landscaping costs every single time. So I do think that the city staff will make it work and I think if nothing else, we can just choose not to mow as many times over the course of the summer. And I just, I think that we can tolerate that. I don't think the grass needs to be that, that low all the time. And I, and like I said before, that the people driving in the middle of the medians drives me nuts.
All right, so we're at the end of the five minutes, so we need to.
I'll move to extend.
Second.
For how long?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, all right, signed by Jay and, or, motion by Jay, signed by Gabriella. All in favor of extending for five minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, nay? All right, five minutes extension, Jay.
Yeah, Misty, I just wanted to ask, where are we, right now, before we've passed any amendments, how far are we from the levy limit? That's kind of a relevant question.
Are you done speaking then? Because you should finish everything you're going to say before she answers.
Well, the, the next question, I have two questions. That's the first question. The second question is, the, the levy limit for 2024 will be based on our approved budget, correct?
You ready for answers? All right.
Okay. So the mayor's proposed budget, even after the omnibus amendments are amended, are approved, hopefully, that does kind of change how the levy, levy amount is, but doesn't change the amount of capacity. So the levy limit capacity as of now is $2,621. And then the 2024 levy limit will be primarily based on net new construction. So the last couple of years, we've gotten extra bumps for the town of Madison absorption and the two TID closures. Those aren't something we can ever expect for relatively long time. So next year, it will be based mostly on net new construction and then it is based on what we adopt now. So it's, that becomes our new base and then net new construction on top of that.
All right, Randy, I have you next.
Yeah, I, I like the, the, the concept of reducing the, the mowing and the, and the to, well, I mean, for a number of reasons, to help the budget and just from an environmental standpoint. But I don't like is that we're just kind of like reducing and we'll just let it happen. I mean, I don't see any specific details, but now when you get down to number eight, I think that applies to number one. I think the two go hand in hand. I mean, that seems to be more the plan and, but amendment number one just seems to be very unclear for me, other than let's reduce, let's cut the budget and move forward from there and let, let parks decide what they want to do.
All right, anyone else? All right, I do not see anyone else, so I believe that we can go to a vote. Tracy, could you vote, please?
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Radafrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Nay.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Udell?
No.
Alder Wheeler?
No.
You have a tie vote?
Awesome. I will say no.
Fail.
All right, we can go to number two, Gabriella.
I move approval of amendment number two, reallocate Fitchburg Star ad funding to the city newsletter.
Second.
Signed by Jay, would you like to use one of your times to speak?
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
So we had a good discussion about this at Cow, but for the public understanding, we spend $16,800 to do a monthly full-page ad on the Fitchburg Star. Earlier this year, the Fitchburg Star, without consulting the city, cut off a significant number of addresses from getting service and has not engaged with us in discussing how we could add that back in. Those neighborhoods overlap pretty perfectly with our Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative. And if I, am I able to share my screen, Scott? Is that something I can do? Hold on, I'm going to share the screen because I think this is really fascinating. I collected some data, so this is our, this is our Healthy Neighborhood Initiative neighborhoods from, this is from the website. This is that map that Chad shared with the council about the different zip codes. Here are addresses, the red star, oh my gosh, you can't see, can you? These stars, red, red stars right here, these are all the addresses that are no longer receiving the Fitchburg Star. I've received confirmation from these individuals. The green do still receive the Fitchburg Star. And there's also some addresses outside of the city of Fitchburg and the city of Madison that do receive the Fitchburg Star, which is why there's a green star outside. If you overlay that Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative map, you can see that all of those red stars are basically in those Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative and the green stars are outside of it. So, you know, it, it, they have some sort of reason for why they do it, but it's obviously like, it's a perfect demonstration of structural inequality, right? Like these neighborhoods are, are less affluent and they are basically like, by the nature of how difficult it is to deliver, they are eliminated from, from delivery. Anyway, so all this is to say that I think that we should not spend $16,800 of taxpayer money when all of our taxpayers do not benefit from the service and especially when the Fitchburg Star refuses to engage us in how to, how to increase service to all of our, our residents. So this amendment is net neutral. We remove that funding from the Fitchburg Star and we reallocate that funding to a city newsletter mailing, which looks like could be a one-time, like three-page newsletter or it could be a two-time, maybe postcard mailer that goes out to all the residents in the city. And then we let the, the chips fall where they may. Thanks.
Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm one of those stars that lost the star. Just want to note that. I, I support this amendment and I also want to just add context to it that I, I tried reaching out to one of the new writers once to be able to cover something that was happening around here. And the response that I got was that that person lives like three hours away from here and that they couldn't make it down. So, I mean, I think that's just another thing that sort of speaks to, you know, obviously they're, they're reducing their budget and they have to make difficult decisions, but it, it doesn't feel like a local newspaper and there feels like something that's truly at a loss through both the lack of areas of Fitchburg being served and the fact that like, we just don't get regular, reliable reporting.
All right, I've got Jay next, then Julia, then. Yeah, aye, Jim. Yeah. Go ahead, Jay.
So I just want to make, I don't want to spend a lot of time, but I want to make this very clear. I absolutely support this amendment. Most of the people sitting up here are not business owners. If the Fitchburg Star was an employee and it was performing the way it's performing for us, it would have been fired years ago. It would have been summarily terminated. My business used to spend money advertising in the Fitchburg Star and we dropped that advertising a long, long time ago because it was ineffective. And it's continuing to be ineffective. It is not an effective tool for us and I think the information Chad sent out earlier, where we can send out two postcards a year for the same amount of money, I think that's by far a much better use of taxpayer money than continuing to throw it away on this publication. Now, I got, we got a email earlier today from a resident who said that he thought this would hurt the Fitchburg Star. It might, it might kill it. I don't care. I don't care. It doesn't perform, it's not doing what we've asked it to do. It should be fired, so I support this.
All right, Julia.
Yeah, so the other thing that I went to add is you look at the map, as I mentioned before in the.
All right, Julia, I, we need to.
I move to extend by 10 minutes.
Okay.
This won't. Gabriella, motion, I'll say Jay, seconded, all in favor of extending by 10 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? All right, that was extended. Sorry, Julia, can you continue?
Yeah, so if you look at the map, also, the other areas where this paper doesn't cover is, you know, it's not going to cover the Southdale area, this is our new annexation area, that how we are going to, you know, you know, how we are going to reach out to that, those neighborhood, informing all the city activity. Second is all the new neighborhood that we are building. This is a new people coming to the city, you know, Terravessa, you know, I can see Terravessa is one of them and all the other uptowns look like. So this is all the influx of new people coming to the city that they are now also receiving information from us, our city news. The other thing I want to mention, if you have read the, the Fitchburg, I don't know if I can call it the Fitchburg Star, because have you read the last two edition? It's more about Verona stuff and a lot of sport. I don't see any information that it used to be about the city. So, and also I want to mention as a person who does, you know, work with a small, a business owner and if you need, and do accounting and, you know, if you need $16,000 a year for your company to survive, I don't know what type of company do you need. So I don't care about the $16,000. I don't think that is going to be a dent to this news, newspaper. But what I want to also, I want to clear that not only is, we are not covering the area where we have, you know, most of this, you know, vulnerable or healthy neighborhood areas, but also Southdale and the new neighborhood. So, so that one is also key. So I want to support this amendment.
All right, Jim?
Yeah, I looked at the last few Fitchburg Stars from January to October and just to see what was in it. And, you know, they had the registration stuff and, you know, for sports. And then when you look at it, probably this could be a quarter page, you know, as far as the, what we put in there, as far as the information. Here's my concern. So each month you have something that basically I think everybody should know. October, fall recycling event, August, Fitchburg Center Farmers Market, July, Festival of Speed, absentee voting, June, Juneteenth, public hearings on mayor's proposed budget, May, Memorial Day celebration, town, and I could go on. And so my question is, and you know, I had some pause and just, we're going to get rid of this system without having a clear plan. And I really don't see what, what happens if we need to get something out right away? So now we're going to, well, we'll put out this newsletter four times or two times a year, and how are you increasing inclusion? And I mean, I just have issues with that. I mean, I totally agree, we should get rid of this system here, but I don't want to get rid of a system without having another system in place. And I think we should probably just give, you know, staff time, what do we need to put out, what's important? And if people don't have internet, sometimes people are saying, well, we'll put out links. Well, if they don't have internet, you're going to put out information with a link on it? I mean, I, this is not, has been fleshed out pretty, you know, to what I would like it to be.
Dave, did you have your hand?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, with, with the star, you know, we had the star, then it went away and everyone complained and then it came back, it was great. The reality is they, they don't charge you anything for the subscription, you know? The little town I grew up, we had a paper, everyone loved it, you had to pay every month. I don't know why the star doesn't go to $12 a year and have a subscription fee. Why, you know, I, I just don't see their model as being viable, giving this, giving this away, you know? If people want it, you know, they, they'd pay for it. But I, again, I, I don't, I don't feel we're getting enough value out of it to continue, continue allocating the city money for it. But I agree with Jim, you know, we need a, I think we need a plan in place before we, we cut this cord.
I got Gabriella, you on to your second turn, and then Julia for that.
Yeah, one more thing I'll say is that we do have the December, we have, we have funding this budget for the December Fitchburg Star. So we can say in our ad that we are no longer going to have this. There's a city newsletter coming, we could have information that they could post on their fridge, you know, different numbers you should call. We could do that for the December Star to prepare people. And then, you know, the other thing about the Fitchburg Star is I, I put this amendment out and my hope was that somebody would call the city and say, hey, $16,800 is a huge part of our budget, let's talk. And I don't even think they know that these amendments exist. Like, what kind of city newspaper doesn't know that we are considering cutting $16,800 of their, of their ad revenue? I just, I, it just blows my mind. But ultimately, I, I, I think that there will be a transition period, which is unfortunate, but I don't think that those people that are living in the neighborhoods that have the least likely access, they, they're the least likely to have internet access. And I know, I actually know of people that do not have internet access, that live in those areas that used to rely on the star, that no longer get it. And I do not think that they, their taxpayer money should be used to pay for something that they do not receive as a service. It's taxpayer money and I think we should put that towards a city newsletter. And I think that the staff could maybe put something in December to warn people that it's, that it's going to end. And I'm happy to write a letter to the editor. Maybe we all could and just like, throw it out there and say like, hey, what would you like to see in a city newsletter? I, I can commit to doing that for December, but I, I just, I think this is unfair and I, I just, I can't. I would have been open to hearing from the Fitchburg Star, but they didn't even know that this was coming. And that seems like a huge red flag to me in terms of their reporting about the city.
Julia.
Yeah, so my other question that I want to ask the council is we decided, you know, if we decided to continue with the subscription, so what we are going to do with the 22% of the household that we are not, the, the Fitchburg Star is not reaching and how those people are going to get any information from us? Besides, you know, I know that we say we have a lot of information on the website, we have a Facebook page, but some of those people don't go to those pages. So how we are going to, how the city is going to outreach and communicate and inform our city activity to that 22% of household? So that one is key that we need to, to determine. And I, I know, I, I agree with you, Jim, that we need to have like a plan, you know, what we're going to do it, how we can do the transition, but, but I don't know, I, I sent an email to Chad this afternoon, I don't know, Chad, if they have contacted the city, the management of the Fitchburg Star. So, so how we can work with them and say, or we can go to, we can have a meeting with them and say, hey, guys, we want to work with you because, you know, the paper is, you know, people read the paper, you know, the people that get the paper. And they used to have a lot of good information, but lately I don't see that type of information in the paper. But have we considered having a meeting with the management team and say, okay, we would like continue this partnership, but you guys need to, you know, this is the area that you're missing, how we can, how you can do that, how you can cover that area? So I think we need to have a meeting with them. We should have. But I think I support this amendment is, you know, because it's, you know, we are not reaching out to critical area for the city, so.
All right, Jay, go ahead. How much time do we have left?
All right. I won't take that long.
All right.
We don't, I, I don't think we have to have a laid-out plan for this right now. This is something we, I mean, it's a newsletter, it's maybe going to be a postcard. You can do this in half hour, 45 minutes if you know how to use the software. I, I think we can work this out and come up with something in a relatively short amount of time. I don't think it takes a whole year to figure out what to do. I do think continuing to, to give this organization money is a waste of taxpayer money. It is an utter waste. And I think we are doing a total disservice to our residents by continuing.
All right, everyone done? All right. I believe Julia has used her spot too. Yep, and Gabriella. All right, ready to vote? Go ahead, Tracy.
Alder Allen?
Without hesitation, yes.
Alder Radafrada?
Yes.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Nay.
Motion carried.
All right, we can go along to number three, Julia.
I move approval of amendment number three, increase urban forest position from point eight to full-time.
Second.
Signed by Gabriella, would you like to use one of your times to speak? Would you like to use one of your times to speak?
Um, I think I, you know, I mentioned, um, in the committee of the whole why it's so important to increase the hour for this position. Um, I think that, um, Linda provided today more information about, um, all the, you know, all the, all the activity that this position does that maybe we don't do, we don't see. Um, and also the other thing I want to mention is this position also work very closely with other department of the city that maybe it's something that we need to, if this, this amendment is not approved tonight, maybe we look, we need to look for next year because Gabriella made a good point the other night that this position also, uh, work very closely or, um, with other, uh, department like public works, um, uh, what is the other one? Planning? Um, so, and I think maybe we need to look for next year to determine how the other department can also help fund in this position, you know? Um, so that's it.
All right, anyone else? Jay?
Yeah, I just very briefly, I totally support increasing this position, but I don't think two thousand twenty-three is the year. I think two thousand twenty-four is the year. We're adding a lot of staff next year and we've added some staff in two thousand twenty-two. I just, I don't think we can fit it in, but I, I do want to see this come back in two thousand twenty-four.
All right, I've got Gabriella and then Jim.
Yeah, I, I think you all know I support this, but I, you know, obviously we didn't reduce the budget to make room for it, so there's, we can't make it happen this year regardless. But I just want to say that, you know, Aaron brought up a point that this wasn't one of the top two positions that Scott Endel proposed for parks. And I think that, I was thinking about that and I, it occurred to me that it's because that the need for her, the additional hours needed is not in parks. It's in planning, it's in stormwater, it's in public works, it's in the other aspects of what she does for the city, um, because her position is, is, is distributed. So I think next year we should consider, um, I would, I would ask maybe Sarah Olson and Scott Endel and Anna Healy to look at the position description and figure out what the breakdown of her position is. What percentage is she using on each of those different departments? And then we should spread the budget for this position throughout the department so that it's not just on parks, because it's not, she's not just a parks employee essentially. She's kind of a consultant to multiple departments. Um, and I think that would solve a, a lot of the issue and be more representative of who she is to the city. And then she can maybe spend some more time on stormwater facilities and, um, spend more time on planning with the plan department, making sure that the trees are done really well for new developments. Um, so yeah, I support this, but I, I can't vote yes because we don't have the money.
I have Jim and then Randy after that. Go ahead, Jim.
I support the position also. I would just like a better process. Um, I, I just think that there needs to be some type of job evaluation when we do this. I mean, we don't even know what she does. And all of a sudden we say, well, let's just, you know, give her more hours. And then just the way it came about, you know, Scott's not giving a presentation on, you know, the position, we're hearing from the public, you know, we're hearing from, um, council members. And the only reason I get concerned is because we got to have a system when we talk about these things that's fair, consistent, transparent and accountable. So the way this came about, I don't think it's, it's there. And also there's another employee with the city that's also saying, well, I need more hours. Now that person's going to their department head, you know, Chad's going to be involved, you're going to be involved, and this just totally did not do it. And so I got, I gotta, you know, say I support it, but I want maybe this next year, just to have a, put a little bit more thought into what the person actually does, a job task analysis, and we can move on from there. Because when I looked at the, um, and Gabriella will tell, tell you, I mean, we talked about it last week, that, um, I looked at the job description, first thing I said, well, is it halftime? Why did it start off halftime? So I think the information is there, but I think it just needs to be a better process so that we're consistent.
Randy, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going to echo a lot of what Jim just said. And just from my own per, I mean, I support this position, but not necessarily, uh, I'm going to vote for the amendment this evening. Um, even in my own professional experience, if the manager doesn't bring that priority to, to, to the, to the, to the top, um, I don't know how we can even support it. Uh, this has gone around for several years now and the position's valuable, but if it's not coming to the manager's top priority, how can we even support it? So, uh, I'm going to vote against it.
All right, before Julia speaks, we need to extend the time.
I move to extend by five minutes.
Second.
All right, move Gabriella, second by Jay, on favor, but they need for five minutes. Say aye.
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 Anyone oppose, say nay. All right, as have it, five minutes extended. Go ahead, Julia.
Yeah, so I want to clarify some point here. Uh, this position, um, we discussed in the tree committee for a couple of months about increasing Anna, um, um, hours and it wasn't nothing, it wasn't new for Scott. He was a consultant too. He was informed what is happening. And also if you look at, um, uh, what Anna does, if you look at the, um, at the minutes or you look at the, um, in the packet of the tree commission, at the end, she prepared a list of a full time, a full page with everything that she does during the month. So it's not like we don't know what she does. We know what she does, it's clear, it's on the website, it's a page every month, every meeting, she described exactly what she does every month. So it's not like a surprise that we don't know what she does, or I don't know what the job description, maybe we need to pay more attention or we, we be more curious about that. But this was nothing that I brought, um, uh, I, I brought this amendment because it was, um, we talked in the part, in the tree committee and the tree committee wanted to move forward that. So I want to be clear with that, um, and it wasn't, uh, something like, oh, because Anna wants to work more hours, we're putting that. No, we discussed it, um, there is a need, um, she's not only planting tree, she also had to maintain tree, she had to, you know, do the inventory of trees of the city, you know, we, there is a lot of things that she does. She worked with a lot of volunteer, volunteer, volunteering the city, coordinating, uh, working to, uh, remove, uh, invasive species or, uh, tree can grow healthy. So there is a lot of stuff that is helping the, the public works, uh, department. So, so it shouldn't be a surprise what, um, that, that she do for, during the month.
Gabriella.
I'm pleased to hear that it sounds like there's support for potentially increasing this in two thousand twenty-four. I would also just like to say that Anna Healy is actually a pretty extraordinary employee. She's actually a master arborist. Very, very few people in the world have that designation. It is an extraordinary thing that a lot of city foresters do not have. Um, so that's pretty extraordinary. And also I think she does a lot, uh, if we wanted to replace her, you'd have to hire two, uh, one and a half or two people. I think we should keep her and I, I think we, we should, one of the things we should do is make her full time. So I hope that it sounds like there's maybe momentum to make this happen in two thousand twenty-four. Um, I just, I don't think we could replace her if we lost her and that would be a real loss for the city.
All right, I don't see anyone else, so we can go ahead to a vote, Tracy.
Alder Allen?
Uh, uh, no.
Alder Rodafrada?
I had to say yes.
Alder Gerhart?
Abstain.
Alder Herbst?
Nay.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Udell?
No.
Alder Wheeler?
No.
Five, two, motion carried.
All right, thank you. Number four, Julia. Julia? It's your high dollar amendment.
Four. Tree advisory. Okay, so, so, um, I move approval of amendment number four, increase tree advisory committee meeting from six to eight annually.
Second.
Signed by Gabriella. Would you like to use one of your times to speak?
So this one is another, um, amendment that we discuss in the tree committee and the tree committee is very, uh, they really wants to increase the number of meetings from six to eight. Um, and the funding for this amendment will come from the two thousand six hundred dollar capacity left in the budget and the total amount is going to be three hundred eighty-six dollar.
All right, anyone else? Jay?
Yeah, I, I guess the only comment I had is until this amendment came along, I didn't know that the tree advisory only met six times a year. Um, I think for any kind of committee that's doing work in the city, it's hard to keep momentum up when you're only meeting every other month. So, I mean, if, if I had known that, I probably would have put in an amendment to change it to twelve. But, um, I think going to eight is a step and maybe we can add a couple more meetings following that.
Dave, go ahead.
I, I support it, um, I'm sorry, Julia, I, I didn't listen enough on Wednesday night. What, what will we gain, you know, what, what is the additional work that you're?
Don't, uh, we can't ask questions and go back and forth. That counts as time to speak. That was, the questions were Wednesday.
All right.
Gabriella.
Well, I was going to say this anyway before Dave asked the question, but I actually think that there's a lot of volunteer, uh, momentum behind trees. We get lots of donations of trees and additional ones in the parks, like the Sierra Club just planted, what was it, eighteen trees around the inclusive playground earlier, uh, this month. So I see part of the tree advisory committee being able to do more engagement around volunteers, which, you know, is amplifying this money. Um, and I, I think that could be a really exciting, one of the things that they could work on.
All right, Julia, use your other one.
Yeah, so, um, the other thing that the tree committee is working is to create the, the tree ordinance that we don't have as a city. And I think they have been working with, um, Valerie, some of the, the members. Um, we want to implement that next year. Um, and also, um, uh, there had been a lot of activity in next door about the tree, the city of cities removing tree and blah, blah, blah. And then people are asking, the city doesn't have a tree ordinance, that, that, so this is part of also those meeting, we need more meeting because we need to move forward with this tree ordinance too. Um, and also, um, the tree committee is very, um, really wants to, to, to be sure that the city, uh, follow the thirty percent canopy tree in every development. Um, so something that, uh, we also now reviewing some of the, what is, uh, what is coming to tree committee now, the plant development? Um, some of those are coming to this, the, the tree committee to evaluate. Um, so we need to have more meeting, David, to, to go through all of that.
Thank you.
All right, I do not see anyone else, so we can go ahead to a vote, Tracy.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Rodafrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, sounds good. Number five, Julia.
So I move approval of amendment number five, that is add, um, Healthy Neighborhood Initiative grant funding to the Southdale neighborhood, uh, that, um, this money is going to be funded by the well-being fund.
Second.
Signed by Jay. Would you like to use one of your times to speak?
Uh, I think I spoke during the committee of the whole, we need to add increased, we have only sixty-three thousand dollar to invest in this grant program. And I think, uh, allocating fifteen thousand dollar that is there in the well-being fund for two thousand twenty-three, uh, to cover the South neighborhood, uh, is a, uh, good use of those funds that they, they aligned with the mission of this, um, amendment.
Yeah, this is, uh, this is for grant funding and we don't know who may apply for grants at this point in time. Um, but what, what I think, I think it helps to designate this money to put it in that, in the fund, to make it known that we have money for Southdale available. And this, you know, if somebody comes forward next year and says, hey, we have this program we want to do in Southdale, um, it avoids having to come back to us and do a budget amendment to transfer the money at that time. And it also announces that to the community that we support the Southdale neighborhood and, and we have this money available to run these programs, uh, whatever they may be. We don't know what they are yet, but that's why we have a Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative Committee so that we can, we can sort through that. So, um, I hope the council will support this. There's no budget impact to this. It just simply makes the money available and announces that another way that we're trying to support this neighborhood.
Randy, go ahead and then Gabriella after that.
Yeah, uh, last week, we had some lengthy discussion on this particular amendment. I'm in support of the amendment, um, but I think there was some, some uncertainty regarding if this is a one-time, um, fifteen thousand dollars or is it, uh, ongoing? And then, um, uh, there was also a question regarding, uh, nonprofits for the Southdale area and Southdale, Southdale neighborhood, if the money was dedicated for the Southdale neighborhood. And, uh, um, I don't know if those concerns are still relevant. Um, if so, I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to, to, um, clarify things, but maybe I should, I see hands going up, maybe we should kick it back or should I, can I offer that amendment at this point?
It's up to you.
All right, I'd like to offer an amendment.
Okay.
To this. And I do actually have the word spelled out. I'll, I'll read it off and I can also hand it back to you if you need to repeat it.
Good.
All right, my amendment is to, to move to amend the proposed budget amendment to be, to be clear that the fifteen thousand dollars is a one-time supplemental funding for the existing H and I grant program to be earmarked specifically for nonprofits that work within the Southdale neighborhood.
Second.
Signed by Jim. Now, I want to clarify one thing, either Misty or Valerie, for now the amendments to the amendment, is it, is it still two speaking cumulative? It's not two more now on this amendment?
Correct.
Okay. So I want to make sure people realize now, if you've spoken once already, you don't have, you have one more time to speak regardless, now or later. So I just want to make sure people know that. I have a list. I'll ask if you want to speak now. You don't have to speak now, we can back to you. But now we're speaking on the amendment, which is clarifying that this is one-time funding. Gabriella, do you want to speak now? Okay.
Um, and just for public understanding too, and I know, um, Jay mentioned it, but it's, this is not tax levy funding. This is something that's already existing in what the Community Well-Being Fund. And that fund is, is a percentage of the fines and forfeitures revenue stream has been diverted for the last couple of years into this fund. Fines and forfeitures are any sort of court fines and fees, parking tickets, et cetera, um, that revenue stream. So putting some of that aside to be reinvested back in the community, that was done through a twenty-twenty, um, or twenty-twenty-one budget amendment. So, uh, I think this is a perfect use of that type of money, a perfect thing, um, to make sure that we have some additional money for, for Southdale. Um, yeah, and I think it's just a good fit and I, I do think we should make sure that we, we are ready to invest in Southdale and, uh, it's a great use of the money.
I've got Jill next. We only got forty seconds left, so someone want to move?
I move to extend by ten minutes.
Second.
All right, move to extend by ten, by Gabriella, second by Jay, all favor extending for ten minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Am I opposed, nay? All right, extended. Now, go ahead, Jill.
Yeah, um, just to Randy's earlier point, I don't think we'll necessarily have a problem finding organizations to operate there. Um, you know, there's several nonprofits within that block. Um, got, you know, Badger Rock across the street and you've got, um, Briar Patch within that neighborhood. And, um, on top of that, you have a, uh, Dane County Joining Forces for Families worker who was actually the first person that I heard from about Southdale, who reached out to me like a year and a half ago. And, you know, by that metro decision meeting where thirty-some people showed up, I think it's very clear that within the neighborhood, there's a, um, there will not be a shortage of input in terms of like who's best suited to, um, serve and work in Southdale.
All right. Julia, do you want to use your second and last term?
Yeah, so I want to mention, we don't need to have an amendment, uh, um, and, and a second amendment to this because it was very clear when I introduced this that it's for only one time for two thousand twenty-three and it's for Southdale. So I say it aloud, I don't know why we need to amend this. And we discussed in the committee of the whole and everyone, I think we were in agreement that it was only one time for twenty-three and for Southdale. So it's on the record. So it's on the record, so I don't know why do we need to amend this.
All right, I have Jay, you want to use, I think this is your second one, isn't it?
Yes.
All right.
That's fine. I agree with that point, I don't think an amendment's necessary to accomplish what you're trying to accomplish, but if a doggone amendment is what it takes to get your vote, then I'll vote yes.
Randy, do you want your second one?
Yes, I will. I sat in with the mayor's sitting last week, and it was contentious. And I remember the question coming back to you, Alder Rodafrada, and you said, I don't know. So it doesn't have to, I'm in support of it, I'm sorry that this offends you, I'm just looking for clarification, so we don't have a structural deficit, that's all, that's all I'm trying to avoid.
All right, a few people have a chance to speak again, I don't see anyone else. So first, we are voting on the amendment to the amendment, which is to clarify the language that this is one-time funding. Tracy, could you go ahead and do the roll call?
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Rodafrada?
I would not say.
Did you hear that, she said abstain?
Yep. Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herp?
Aye.
Alder Malvanado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Come in, motion carried.
All right, now we have the amended amendment, so if you have an option to speak still, you can, I don't see anyone's. Oh, Chad, you get unlimited speaking opportunities.
I'm going to use my opportunities very sparingly, but I do want to at least confirm what I've heard from the council as far as how you're prioritizing this funding, assuming it may pass here in the next couple of minutes, is that this $15,000 would be administered as part of the HNI grant program, and it would specifically be earmarked for the Southdale neighborhood. That is a deviation from how we typically do our HNI neighborhood grants, and that they are not earmarked for specific neighborhoods, so I just want to confirm that I am hearing this correctly, and that this is how staff will carry out this particular item. I am seeing a lot of heads nodding, so I think that I've interpreted it correctly.
None of them can't speak, so. All right, seeing nothing else, Tracy, can you do roll call on now the amended amendment?
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Rodafrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herp?
Aye.
Alder Malvanado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, going on to number six, Gabrielle.
I move approval of amendment number six, Adjust Funding for Sustainability Plan Phase Two.
Second.
Sent by Jay, would you like to use one of your times to speak?
Yeah, I hope this one is simple, because we passed Resolution R 20422 today, there is actually $10,000 of funding allocated to the sustainability plan in the 2023 budget. It is no longer necessary because we found the money in the 2022 budget through those vacancy savings to pay for it all. So this amendment basically removes that funding, which is coming from the TID closure, just to kind of clean up the budget, because we already have it fully funded now, thanks to the council through that resolution.
All right, anyone else? Looks like we're good. All right, Tracy, go ahead.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Rodafrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herp?
Aye.
Alder Malvanado?
Aye.
Alder, Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you, number seven, Joe.
Like to move amendments, number seven, reinstated funding for Part Three of the Teen Center Study.
Go.
Sent by Julia, would you like to use one of your times to speak?
Sure. Lot to say, because I wasn't able to attend the committee of the whole meeting, but I'll try to be as brief as I can, given the amount of time we have. So just wanted to give a context, I listened to the comments and the concerns at the COW meeting, and I just want to add a couple pieces of information for the public. I emailed a few things to the council. The first was a copy of the PDF for the proposed CIP amendments for 2022 through 31. And on that includes the amendment that I made that had passed by council, five to three. In the body of that amendment, there was, you know, a clear sort of order lined up about what direction that the three parts of the Teen Center Study would come in. First, the community engagement study, followed by a concept design study, followed by feasibility study. And I also shared a draft RFP that was developed by our former city planner, Wade Thompson, about a week and a half before his departure. And that RFP was for a concept design study as well. And I just want to read a few of the pieces from that study, just so that you can get a sense, again, this is for the public, for what was included when I worked with our city planner in order to do this. And I just want to state that I'm not a city planner, this is my first time going through a process like this, so I really relied on the expertise of staff at the time to be able to help conceptualize. So a few things that are mentioned in here, and this is a, I think a nine-page RFP, but ultimately, this RFP seeks proposals from qualified entities to identify potential locations, to develop a conceptual site design and associated information, to inform the potential development of a teen services and resource facility in the Verona-Worlwest area, including the following components: indoor space, housing, learning, recreation, culture, resource, and a sociable neighborhood gathering spaces, adjacent or nearby existing future-owned city parklands, housing complimentary outdoor recreational amenities, and a comprehensive community engagement process to complete the facility conceptual planning and site design processes, including developing relationships with all relevant stakeholders. There's a lot of other things listed in here, but essentially, I just want to clear up kind of the discussion about, you know, confusion over what it was. As, you know, I really took the advice and the direction of our staff at the time to be able to develop a three-step process. I'm very open to kind of how this process ultimately looks, but the heart of this amendment is essentially to ensure that that three-step process is completed. I'll also point out that many of the things that are listed in here, in this draft RFP, are things that, you know, several members of the council expressed the need to be able to do first in a feasibility study. So, you know, I'm, I'm fine with talking about how we do what and in what order, and I, you know, would like to work with our current staff to be able to develop a proper RFP, but I think, given kind of what was developed and shared by, you know, a staff member with years of experience in this type of work, I think we've got a lot of that information and that guidance already in place. We lost, obviously, a lot of momentum with staff turnover and onboarding and hiring of, you know, our new city planner, but, you know, again, I think this is information, and this is a process that was ultimately approved in our CIP in 2021. And I'm open to working with council to be able to ensure that that, you know, process continues, so that we get some really good information, and we get some really good momentum here. I also want to speak to, I know-
Go, hold on a second, we need to extend.
I move to extend by 10 minutes.
Second.
All right, move by Gabrielle, second by Jay, all in favor extending 10 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Am I opposed, nay? All right, keep going, sorry.
Sure. Finally, I just want to mention, I know that fundraising was brought up, and I want to state that, you know, well over $5,600 was raised privately for the initial engagement study that took place this year. There was definitely a potential to be able to raise more, but when we talked with the consultant Equity by Design about what the need was, they were able to complete that study with, you know, the proper amount of money, and the additional fundraising ultimately came to be able to include youth and to be able to pay youth for their work there. So there was definitely interest in other entities being able to, you know, contribute additionally to this, but ultimately, we put the brakes on that because we had what we needed to be able to complete that study. So I'll leave it there, and I'll just say that, you know, I know the things that I know, and I know the things that I don't know, and for the things that I don't know, I tend to seek the expertise of others that have that professional experience, and that's, you know, what I've done throughout this entire process. I've consulted with folks who are experts in their field and who specialize in the work that they do in order to develop a process that makes sense and a process that is intentional, and which you've heard from experts, from schools, administrators, to public health professionals, to youth themselves, there's a variety of voices weighing in that this is a very thoughtful and intentional process, and I seek to continue to move it that way.
All right, I'm going to actually use one of mine two times to speak real quick, and I know you weren't able to make it last week, Joe, and I just want to kind of follow up on what I was saying last week, that I, ultimately, I don't think this is the right format and process to do this, but we are doing a TID project plan like we did last year in February, and while I think this should fail, I will say right here, though, that I will put this in that list of TID projects, so that it's ultimately the same thing, it's just that I do feel like the process is, we have the list of projects in February, and we talk about them, just like we did a year ago. And so I will say, you know, Missy's here, Chad's here to hear it, I will put this in that list of projects, even though I feel like this should fail, because it's going outside of that process, and I think it's important to keep that process. And I think that makes a lot of sense, like I mentioned last week, they even have a discussion on the Teen Center at the COW in January, probably, I think that would be a lot of really valuable, because I think there is some confusion, because I know in CIP, there was discussion of that being, the step two being planning, but in the operating budget discussions, I believe that's when Randy was, I don't want to speak for Randy, but he was saying for Phase Two that it is feasibility, and there's a lot of confusion on is Phase Two feasibility, or is Phase Two, you know, the kind of planning piece? And CIP was one thing, but I think when we, actually, we're in the operating budget, which is why I think it just makes a lot of sense to talk about in COW, but ultimately, even though I think this should fail because it's not in the process, the project is going to be in the TID list of projects. So I have Jay next, and then Gabrielle.
Yeah, I, I don't, I've been in support of building a teen center long before any
of you other people were sitting up here at this table. My support for this goes back to beginning discussions in 2007, and I think this needs to move ahead. I, I support this project, but I agree with the mayor that this is the wrong mechanism for putting this in. I think this needs to be done in the first quarter of next year when we're doing the TID plan, because we're trying to amend, basically what we're trying to do here with this amendment is amend the TID plan without having the TID plan in front of us. And we're going to have it, and I believe the mayor, when he says he's going to put it in, in the first quarter, when we get to that point. At this point, we haven't even done Phase Two yet, and you're right, Joe, it's staffing issues have created a bit of a, you know, we lost a lot of momentum, there's no question about it. And if, if Phase Two had already been done, or we were in the process of doing that, I might be willing to look at an amendment, probably not in, still not in this process, but another amendment to make, to provide the funding for it. I just don't think in the 2023 budget, working on the TID expenditure plan is the right way to do it. So I'm going to vote no on this amendment, but don't mistake that for lack of support for this project. I 100% support getting this project done, and I, and I, and I will chastise my fellow members up here if we have any more delays in getting it done. We need to, we need to move forward with this, this is something that's been needed for a long, long time. And there were, there were a number of students who came up here and spoke to us tonight, and they, and they spoke to us not too many months ago, a number of people showed up here to speak to us, and this is something that we needed before most of them were born. It's just one of the things about being a city, it's the type of service you have to provide, and I agree with the comment that was made by one of the speakers, that this is an issue of public health, and it's something we need to move forward on. So I'm going to vote no on this amendment, but, but I expect that it will be in when we get to the TID project plan next year.
Gabrielle, and then Randy.
I have three things. First, I'm glad that Joe brought up the 2022 capital project improvement, CIP amendment process, because that's what I looked at after we had our COW discussion. Does anyone mind if I share this, my screen real quick, is that okay, Scott? I save everything, so of course I saved this document, but this is, again, the CIP from, the process from 2021, so last year, not this year, and this was amendment number 12, this is the last time the council voted on the Teen Center project. Obviously, there was more process with the budget, but this is the last time we actually voted on it, and it very, very clearly calls out $30,000 community engagement study, CIP amendment would include a $30,000 concept design study in 2022, that's what we talked about a lot, the, you know, the wording of that last time, and then a $40,000 feasibility study and final design in 2023. So just to clarify that, when Joe pulled that language, like this is, it literally came from exactly what we voted on in Amendment Number 12 back in 2021, and it was actually the same council, because no one, everyone maintained their seats in the last election. And then that's that, number two. Just in response to Aaron and Jay's comments about the process, I actually think there's nothing wrong with making kind of a statement as part of a council about what our priorities are in budget, even if it's more symbolic, just because this is one of the few opportunities for council members to actually bring ideas forward. We don't get a lot of opportunities to just kind of generate ideas, and I think the budget process is great for that, that's why you'll have seen me bring forward things that I knew would fail, just because I thought they would, they were important to talk about. So although maybe it's unusual to allocate TID funding in advance, I don't think there's anything wrong with the council saying that we want this to be funded, and if we're going to do it anyway, let's just say that we support the project and say that we're planning to do it in the future. Obviously, it can come again through the TID plan. And I'd also just say that we've done this in the past, back in 2020, when we were voting on the 2021 budget, I suggested that we used gasoline savings to put into a hybrid electric vehicle fund. That was not, that was like a rollover funding from the year, that was a very unusual process, that wasn't like a typical thing, but we did that as part of the council budget process, because we all discussed it, we thought hybrid electric vehicles were important, and we did it because that's, you know, it's kind of a way for us to declare what we support as a council and where we're going. So even if it's not like a perfect, exactly how the process would go, if we all support this study, if we all support funding this study, I see no reason why we shouldn't pass this tonight. And, and I think it does send a very, very bad message to the community when, and it's a confusing message to the community, if we vote no on things like this. I just, I, we are allowed to do what we want as a council, and if we support this project, I think we should pass this, and obviously, we can take care of it again, we can approach it again at the TID, the TID spending plan process as well. And then the last thing I wanted to say was the, the public hearing, I just kind of tallied up the comments, there were 22, sorry, 28 total comments for the, for this process, this budget process. 22 were on the Teen Center, that's 79% of comments were on the Teen Center, and then of those 22 comments, seven were actually teens, which I was like very blown away by, I thought that was so great to see those young people that have, are teens, or that are, were just recently, you know, they're still teens, right, they're 19, but that were just recently living in Fitchburg, saying how much they support it. So that's, a third of the comments were from teens themselves, and that's the thing that I'm really blown away about with this, with that first part of the process, was how much involvement of young people there was. I, like, that, I think, is such an important voice, and I think the city's done a great job of, and our consultant has done a great job of engaging with the teens and finding out what they'd like.
Sorry to interrupt, we have to extend.
Okay, I move to extend by 10 minutes.
Second.
Sent by Jay, all in favor extending 10 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
And I am done.
Am I opposed, nay? All right, you're done.
Thank you.
All right, sorry. Randy?
Yeah, I, I need to back up, and I, thank you for the clarification, Gabrielle, regarding the design versus the feasibility, because I thought for sure I had said the feasibility as well, because I think, to your point, Joe, I've all along stressed that feasibility and business plan, and I articulated my concerns, but at the same time, process, process is so important to get to where we want to build this Teen Center. I'm really torn between, I got several remarks that were made here tonight, as far as, are we, how do we commit to something where we're not completely definite about as far as a TID closure? I believe in my heart that that TID, the TID closure will come along, but we want this project to move forward, but how do, how do we, how do we commit to something when we don't know it's an absolute? So I'm, I'm a little bit torn yet, as far as committing to moving this project forward or waiting until first quarter, so I'm anxious to hear from others.
Jim, go ahead.
Joe, I want to thank you for your comments, I mean, they were really helpful for me. I mean, I just look at it that a feasibility study should come first, because basically, what you're saying- Because basically what you're saying, I mean, I, I read the, the study that the teens did. It's a lot there. And what the feasibility study is gonna do, where are our weaknesses in their plan? And I think we need to do that first before we start talking about concept and, and design. Just by nature, I mean, the feasibility study should come before. And I like what you said about experts, but remember, you know, law enforcement, the prosecution of bringing an expert to say one thing, defense of bringing the expert to say the other thing. And when you said that, you know, I really appreciate what you said staff at the time said that. Because I think now staff is like, why are we doing the concept and design first and not the feasibility? So I'm willing to work with you on, on this, but I just want to make sure that the feasibility study comes first. And I don't know how we do that tonight.
Jay, go ahead.
Yeah, I, you know, I've, after the conversation last week, I've given a lot of thought to this, and I, I had a chance to read through the document that Joe sent earlier, this draft document. And it started to make more sense to me why this, why this wording is being done in the way it's being done. I think, I mean, I, I don't, I've, I personally have never had to build a, a structure like this, so I don't know how it works. But it's starting to, I'm starting to get some ideas about it, and it's, in a way, it's kind of similar to what we did with the library. So before we built the library, we had a lot of public meetings. We talked to Dane County Library Service. We, we asked people, what kind of services do you want to see the library provide? Do you, do, how much space is all this going to take? And that wasn't part of feasibility. That was actually kind of a design process. So we couldn't get to feasibility until we knew basically how big the thing was gonna be and what kind of services we were going to provide. And part of that is the design process. So I think, I think one of the, as I'm looking at this, you know, it's a lot more complicated than it seems initially. I think, I think there's, there's different phases of design, and one of them is to get an idea of how big do we need this thing to be? What kinds of things are we gonna be expected to do in it? I don't think that, you know, as we talked at the last meeting, I don't think that this is gonna get us an architectural drawing of what the building's gonna look like, because there's not anywhere near enough money for an architectural design. But it might get us an idea of how big this building needs to be. Does it need to be 10,000 square feet? Does it need to be 50,000 square feet? I have no idea. But I think you have to do that. You have to get an idea of what you're gonna build before you can decide whether building that is feasible, before you can figure out where would it be located? How much is it gonna cost? How would fundraising work for something like this? Is there gonna be fundraising? I mean, I think there's just a lot of questions that you, that, that have to get answered first, and part of that, I think, is legitimately called design. But it's not an architectural design. It's not like we're gonna figure out what color the gutters are gonna be or any of that kind of stuff. It's just, it's just what, what do you need? What are we, what are we trying to accomplish here? And what's it gonna take to do that? So I think that's what this is, I think that's what this phase two is about. Among other things, there's, there's, there's a bunch of other stuff in here. And then we're, and then we get to the feasibility, which is phase three. So I think that's, and then there'll be more phases after that, obviously, because then we'll have to deal with things like site location and architectural design and all that other kind of stuff. So that's it.
Ready to vote? Oh, Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanted to add on, and I, I will read a little bit more of this. So on the third page, it said, "The city does have facility planning partners that were heavily involved in the engagement process, and those partners are mentioned. They will take an active role in conceptual planning and site design process. The city is interested in exploring creative partnerships related to ownership and operation of the facility. As such, the conceptual planning and site design will require formulation of ownership models, and that model is listed. After the completion of a conceptual planning and site design process per the scope of work, the city will undertake a feasibility study." So I think some of the things that Jay mentioned, right, like where in our neighborhood could this be based on what vacant land is there? You know, again, like exploring the realities with zoning as to, you know, how big it will be. I think some of these things are mentioned in that feasibility, you know, that, that I think folks are thinking about. The other thing I just want to go back to is the TID. So, I mean, this was something I had discussed as I, you know, was sort of planning to write this amendment with Misty. And that was one of the, the options that was, you know, that we had discussed. So that's the reason I'm pursuing this as a, as an option. You know, and, and from my understanding, that's an acceptable thing to do. So that's why I wrote TID as an option, because I didn't necessarily want to spend, you know, time scrutinizing this within our levy limits. I want this to be something we can explore if we get to the point where the council sees it as a priority in the TID closure, and if we have the funding amongst all of our other priorities to be able to do that.
Ready to vote? Dave, go ahead.
I'll just come back, Joe. You know, I think you know I'm supportive of this. I donated money for the, for the engagement study, and I would donate money, you know, for the building of it. But I, I've said all along, you know, we need people to step up, step up and pledge some money to this. You know, right now, the momentum is the momentum to have Pittsburgh taxpayers pay for the whole thing. And I, you know, I don't think that's, I don't think that's right. I think we need, we need a decent, you know, percentage of donated money, and that's, that's what's troubled me all along, is we haven't, if that was moving ahead, I think the grit, the skids would be greased. But, you know, it seems like now we're just keep coming back to taxpayers, you know, engagement study, 30,000. We can only raise 5,600. The rest was Parkland dedication fee, you know, was used for the rest of it. So that's the part, you know, I'd like you to, to work on, is get that, get that part moving. And I think you'd have, you'd have support, I think.
I move to extend by five minutes.
Second.
Sent by Jay to extend by another five minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose, nay? All right, that's extended. Go ahead, Gabriella.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment one more time about the, like, the order of the studies, and I, I just do, I want to kind of reiterate what Jay mentioned, is I just do think this is just part of the feasibility. Like, you have to figure out what the building kind of might be in order for you to find out if you can afford it. And it's not gonna be specific design. So I just kind of see it as two parts of a feasibility study. And then, and just in response to what Dave said, I, you know, I think that this study is how we're gonna find out how we're gonna pay for it. I don't, I don't, I don't think any of us really knows how it might work. I think there's a lot of fear that it can't be funded by taxpayers, and I can understand that, but I think that that's why we're doing the feasibility studies. We're gonna find out how this could function, how this might work. And so we just don't know enough to know where the money's gonna come from at this point. But we, so we, we need to learn more, which is why I think we should invest in this. I think this is an amazing project. I think it's an inspiring project. I think it's a project that has vision. I think it's something that people will look to as a potential model for other cities. I think this has gotten this community excited in a way that I've not seen anything else in my time at the city. The first time this was brought up, there were 70 public comments in support of it. We had 22 people here tonight talking about how important this was. This is an incredible project, and I think that we need to keep pushing this forward, and we don't know exactly how it's gonna work, but that's why we're gonna continue to study it. And I just, I, I understand that there's, there's some comments about, about process, but like ultimately, we can do what we want. If we as a council want to support this, let's pass it. Let's say yes. Let's not confuse the public by, by rejecting this, this proposal. And then we will deal with it again once the TID closure comes. And I, I don't think there's anything wrong with us as a council saying, yes, we do want to fund this sometime next year when and if the TID closure money comes. I don't think there's anything wrong with that, to doing that as a council, process-wise, or just, you know, as a, as a statement of what we, what we want to do as a council. So I would encourage everyone to vote yes for this, and because it's a, it's an amazing project.
Julia, go ahead.
Yeah, I think Gabriella mentioned everything that I was planning to say. So now, I was answering to you, David, when, how we are gonna fund this, you know, and I think when we go through the feasibility study, we are gonna determine, okay, we are gonna have an idea how much it's gonna cost, how we're gonna fund it. And I think it should be a mix of funding sources, you know? It should be, we should have an, you know, we should be part of that funding process as a city. Private funding, grants, you know, I think we have, we are gonna determine all of that when we are, after we are done with the feasibility study. I wanna support this project because I have supported this project since day one, when we introduced this amendment in 2020. So, and also, I agree with Gabriella that this council tonight, we can, maybe symbolically, we can say, yes, we want to approve this, and we want to, it should be a priority for the funding that we are gonna use for the closure of the, the next TID. So I think, I don't think why we cannot do that. It's, we are the council. We can make those, this decision. We can do it.
Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, my comments are basically, we're setting expectations that we don't know that we can meet. You know, it's good to say, yeah, we got 70-something people, you know, that made comments and everything, but there's a reality that we're gonna have to hit. And I mentioned it at the COW meeting, you raise expectations, unfulfilled expectations lead to distrust in government. And I'm not saying go against it, but when I look at a feasibility study, there's gonna be services in there. And are those services are gonna be able to be supported? And I think that, that's a part of the feasibility study. Let's look at the hub. I mean, we got, we're gonna have another project going at the same time. You know, and already, last year, we were told it's gonna be $60,000, $70,000 as far as operating expenses. Now it jumped up to $125,000. We gotta be really careful, and we gotta let the public know, yeah, we support it. But we shouldn't just go willy-nilly and just say, well, just do it because, you know, we're gonna have a symbolic vote. We're talking to the public here. They listen to us. And we need to be as clear, as transparent as possible. I'm not agi, I'm not totally against this. But when we keep raising these expectations, I mean, you know, and I gotta go back, that, Joe, you told us that you could raise tens of thousands of dollars. And then I look at the report, it says, well, we got all this support from businesses and everything. It's only $6,700.
Jim, I have to hate to interrupt, but we have to extend.
Motion to extend.
Second.
For how long?
I only got one more minute.
Well, there's other people, though. 10 minutes, all right. Second by Jay. All in favor extending 10 minutes?
Aye.
And oppose, nay? All right, sorry for interrupting. Go ahead, finish.
I mean, and that's, that's all I'm asking. Let's tamp down these, these expectations that we're setting for people, because if it doesn't go as people expect, if it doesn't go the year that people want it to go, we know that's gonna happen. You didn't do this because, fill in the blank. And we shouldn't be going down that road. We got a lot of, we gotta have a lot of things that we have to think about with Southdale, transportation, public safety, infrastructure on grants and everything. This is not gonna be easy. So we need to slow down and collaborate, and how are we gonna actually do this? Already, I'm collaborating with, you know, Mike Zimmerman, how we could do affordable housing. Because we're gonna need an infrastructure. We don't have the expertise to actually manage that. And already, we're thinking, okay, how can we get this done? Because we know we're gonna come up with challenges, and that's all I'm, that's all I would like to hear more of. How are we gonna collaborate to get it done? And just that of, you know, raising expectations.
I got Dave and then Julia. Go ahead, Dave.
You know, I want to record, I, I'm, I'm for the teen center, but I'll, I'll go back to the model that I'm most familiar with. It's the diocese of Madison. So if parish wants to add to their school or their, you know, build a new church, the bishop requires them to have 70% of the money pledged, you know, before they can do anything. Now, I'm not saying we need to meet that threshold. But what I, what I'm seeing on this is, I, I want to see, you know, I want to see pledges from people. There's, you know, whether it's businesses or powerful people, you know, I'm not powerful people, but I'll pledge. But, you know, we need to have those, and then, then there's the full support of everyone. There's the full support of everyone, not just the people, you know, that, that are fully invested in the teen center. So that's all I'll say.
Julia, go ahead.
So, um, so I understand your position, Jim, but I think all of us have different priority of what we want to see in the city. And I think we are, some of that, we are speaking from our heart, as in where we want to see, you know, where are our priorities? Where we want to focus? And all of us have different priorities, you know, I mean, so, and we need to respect that. And for me, the teen center, the hub, a high priority. Because I want to invest in the community, especially in areas where we have neglected for many years, services that we don't provide to certain areas. And I know it's gonna be hard, because, you know, it took me almost four years to build the inclusive playground, you know, because it was a 50/50, you know, partnership, you know? We had to collect 50% of the funding so the city can release the funds to do it, but we do, we did it. You know, and it took us, and this was maybe, maybe Joe and the rest of the people that they want to build this teen center. Maybe we need to be realistic at one point that, you know, this big project takes time. We don't build it in two or three years. But I think we need to, we are, we are doing the right thing to, to go through the phases, okay? And we need to go through this phase to determine if at the end it's gonna be feasible or not. And how much it gonna cost and how we're gonna do it. But it's all about priorities. It all by a priority. For me, this is a high priority.
Randy and Shannon, you're the only two that can speak if you want to. Randy? All right, then I guess we'll have to vote then. Oh, Chad, you wanna clarify?
I'm gonna use another one of my unlimited turns.
All right.
That's what Erin said earlier, so.
You only got six minutes.
Yeah. I just want to clarify from a direction standpoint, what I'm hearing from the council is that phase two, while there's some, I guess, conversation as to what that is, but there is $30,000 in the 2022 budget that the city staff can begin to utilize on RFP, that the direction that, from council is that we do, do a concept refinement, and that phase three would be the feasibility. That's what, what I need to know from a staff direction standpoint.
No one can tell you what they think right now, so. All right. Go ahead, Tracy.
Alder Allen?
No.
Alder Radifrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Maldanato?
Aye.
Alder Straspin?
No.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
No.
I vote?
I'll say no. All right, number eight, Gabriella.
Sorry, just a second. I'm taking a note. I move approval of amendment number eight, add funding to pilot sustainable vegetation in street medians.
Second.
Sent by Jay, and do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, so we've had quite a lot of discussions, so I probably won't belabor the point, but I think we should create sustainable vegetation that does not need to be mowed twofold, two reasons. Number one, so that it is safe for the people that, so that the people that are mowing it do not have to do that anymore, because it's unsafe. And then also so that it's just less expensive, because we can find vegetation that stays green or stays alive, that is low-profile, doesn't need to be mowed, and stays year after year. And I, I do think that we need to pilot this next year so that as we continue to grow, as we continue to add streets, that we're not adding more turf grass that might eventually need to be turned over to something more sustainable. We should just, from here on out, we should make sure that we're ready to plant something that's, doesn't need to be mowed. And if I could share my screen one more time, if that's okay, Scott. So there are, if you just do a quick, like, search for types of no-mow grass alternatives, here's a whole list of different ones. Here is a list of a whole bunch of different ones with different specifications. Here's a pilot project I found for Selkirk, Canada, for no-mow or low-mow street medians. This is just a quick Google search. Like, there are so many different resources. There's so many different options that we can explore. And I think we have, we have the expertise in the city to make sure that we have, you know, an option that works for us in our climate with our needs. But we do need the funding ready to actually be able to do that, so I encourage. Uh, but we do need the funding ready to actually be able to do that, so I encourage you to vote for this.
Jay, go ahead.
I love this proposal with all my heart.
Anyone else? Dave?
Wouldn't, if, if we have a street project coming up, wouldn't we, wouldn't we have the money in there to do it? As a, as a pilot, or tell me if I'm, you know, if we're, if we're putting a meridian in on a project we have coming up, isn't it in the budget already? Uh, you know, that we, we won't necessarily need, need this, I, you know, I'm all, I'm all for it, but.
Misty, you wanna answer it?
I'm not familiar enough with the proposal to know if there's an additional cost to say implement something like this, and then in theory you save the maintenance costs going on, that would be my guess, in which case we would likely need some additional funding in the construction project in order to make that initial investment.
I guess, I guess this council is a speaking term, I would see it's kinda like the electric hy- hybrid vehicle type thing, where if there's additional cost, then this would be used to pay for additional cost, if there's additional cost to put in some kind of a, it's a different type of median instead of turf grass. Julia?
So, um, maybe that, this one is a question for Misty. So, we talked about, okay, we need to, eventually we will need to have more funding to implement this. So this is something that we need to put in the CIP next year?
I think the intention here is that this ten thousand dollars would be enough to do a pilot.
Okay.
We'd be able to see how it goes and if we want to continue. If you wanna continue and either do a Phase Two of a pilot or just go all bore, uh, then that would need to be implemented. I'm not sure if it's a capital piece or an operating piece, but at some point that conversation would have to happen and additional money provided.
Can I, can I finish?
This is your second time then?
Yeah, no, that's it.
Okay.
No, I, I, I am in total in favor of this, because it's part of my, my amendment number one, too. Um, the question is, um, can we start implementing this, uh, this is maybe for another discussion, in all the new neighborhood they are coming to the city, can we talk to the developer and say that we want in the medians to have some substitute or alternative, like, uh, there are some grasses that I was doing some research, that they don't grow too much and you cannot mow. So can we start having that discussion in all the new developments that are coming to the city that we say that we want to start adapting this, you know what I mean? So maybe, I don't know, this for, this discussion, we can have it in another committee, but I think maybe we need to start thinking about this.
Jay?
Yeah, I, so, I think this idea, this proposal right here is to take some piece of existing median and convert it to something else. The, the other things that were brought up, Dave, I think if we're talking about a, a road reconstruction project, we would just put it into the RFP. It's, the cost of that isn't gonna come out of this ten thousand dollars or even this line item, it would simply come out of the, the project plan for, for the road reconstruction project. I, my suspicion is the incremental cost, you know, if we're talking about a, a two or three million dollar road reconstruction project, the incremental cost of putting in sustainable plantings instead of grass is probably just a few thousand dollars, if even that. It may, there may not be any incremental cost, because, um, this, this is obviously going to cover the removal of whatever's there now to put in whatever we're gonna try for the pilot. So, um, and I think the same thing with.
We need to extend the time.
I move to extend by ten minutes.
Second.
Alright, all in favor of extending ten minutes?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any polls, nay? Alright, sorry.
I think the same thing with Gabriella's point is that, um, if we're looking at a new development, I think we just put it into the, um, you know, as part of the architectural and design review or maybe as part of our requirements for, for getting a, getting a plan approved, we just tell them, you know, in the terraces or in the medians or in the whatever, um, this is what we want you to do. So, I mean, those, that, that, if we're building something new, that's a, that's an entirely different kind of project than, than replacing something we already have. But I do think we need to spend some time to figure out what's gonna be the best thing for the city of Pittsburgh. And I, you know, just as we've learned with different, uh, tree issues over the years, I think it's important that we not just pick one species and say, this is what we're gonna put everywhere. We should probably have a variety of things, just in case some stupid blight decides to evolve and, and kill all of something, um, at least it's not gonna kill everything.
Gabriella?
Yeah, so, and just, and, you know, I, I think if this money, if this passes and there's this money there, I would love to have a discussion of this, I know that RCC would be happy to probably have an open discussion about this that we all could listen in on and maybe contribute to. But I think there probably are multiple elements of this, like, we, we, I assume we'd wanna test multiple plants, like, not just one. Because, like Jay said, like, either because of disease or just because maybe one will work better than others. I think there's multiple plants, and then there's two different processes, right? There's establishing a new street medians, and then there's transitioning old street medians to it, which is a different process from just planning it from the outset. So both of those require different things. And then also, you know, certain streets are gonna, certain streets are, are plowed more often, they're more salt versus other ones. So there's like different potentially plant needs based on the location of the median. So all that is to say that I hope a pilot will be multi-pronged. It will cover a lot of different issues that could come up as we do this transition. Um, and, and that's what, that's what I would like it to be. But I would love if, if forthcoming, um, construction projects automatically don't put in turf grass, that would, I would love that. Um, and maybe that, that this statement, if we pass this today, will indicate that that's what we'd like, um, city staff to pursue. But, but yeah, that's kinda what I'm thinking, is I, I think it needs to be a wide variety of different types of plants, different approaches, um, and different types of streets.
Dave, did you want to speak?
Yeah, Jake, I made my point though, you know, I, I'd rather not have this amendment, we just do it on a new project, and it's, you know, I, I think that'd be the way for us to, way for us to go on it, so.
Anyone else? Yeah, Chad?
I'll just reiterate my point from last week at the committee of the whole, um, to have staff work on this particular project and do, uh, at least a preliminary assessment on what the options may be to replace turf grass, make some recommendations on, uh, where potentially a pilot could occur, uh, if we were going to replace turf grass. And, uh, that, that's an intent that I have, still have to, uh, work on with staff here with ideally a report back, uh, and information available next month.
Seeing no one else, we can go ahead and vote, Tracy.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Radifrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strasman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Seven one, motion carried.
Alright, number nine, Gabriella.
I move approval of amendment number nine, increase funding for Swan Creek Monitoring Station.
Second.
Sent by Jay, and do you wanna speak to it?
Yes, please. Uh, so I did cover this quite in depth before, but I just, for the public that's watching, the Swan Creek, Swan Creek Monitoring Station was installed in 2021. It's a USGS, United States Geological Survey Monitoring Station, similar to ones that are all over the region. Um, they monitor storm water, well, they monitor waterways, but in, part of the reason why is because they're assessing the effectiveness of stormwater, uh, processes that the cities pay for. So our stormwater utility is not just to manage the flow of the water, it's also to control pollutants and suspended solids. We can't know if we're doing that well unless we're actually measuring it. Um, and so the Swan Creek is the first monitoring station that allows us to actually collect data, which it has been doing since about June of 2021. Uh, there are two processes that are not, well, there's one process that was added this year, um, through a grant, the orthophosphate sampling, but that, that grant ends at the end of this year. Um, so this amendment would allow that to continue, and then also would add something that doesn't exist now for nitrates. Those two sampling both have value in terms of understanding, um, really policy, how, how we're managing construction sites and, and stormwater. It really helps us make decisions about if we're doing this well and if we need to make changes. Um, and, and, and as a, as a side comment, the orthopean nitrate sampling is already done at every other single, every other, uh, USGS Dane County Monitoring Station already. So I think this would bring us into alignment. And then last thing I'll mention is that the USGS staff member that wrote, uh, the scientific memo basically said that, uh, there may be requirements related to orthophosphates and nitrates in the future, TMDL. Um, and so having a baseline data set will be really helpful in terms of us understanding, um, or hitting EPA ba- basically requirements in the future. Um, having that baseline data is really important. Thanks.
Anyone else? Seeing none, let's just go ahead and vote, Tracy.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Radifrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhardt?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strasman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Alright, now it's the omnibus amendments. Uh, Randy, as finance chair, do you wanna make the motions for these?
Yes, let me.
Put you on the spot, quick.
Yeah, we get to them. Uh, motion to approve omnibus amendment A, adjust Fitchrona EMS budget based on EMS commission action.
Second.
Sent by Julia, and Misty, you wanna speak to this?
I will. Uh, so as we talked about last week, EMS commission had a special meeting and adjusted their budget, um, which did increase the, uh, amount that the city of Pittsburgh will pay. We do have a corresponding levy limit adjustment. So while it is increasing the levy by twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars, the levy limit is also increasing by that same amount, so it's a net zero for that levy limit calculation.
Any further questions on this? Alright, I don't see any, so let's go ahead.
Let's do a voice vote on this.
Well, yeah, I think we can probably try a voice vote, and if we have any problems on these, then we can do it from there. So we do a voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? Alright, that's approved, next one, Randy?
So, um, motion to withdraw omnibus amendment B.
Second.
Alright, sent by Gabriella, do you wanna speak to it all? We just don't need it?
No.
It's withdrawn, so we're done.
Alright.
We don't have to.
We still have to vote though, don't we?
No, not withdrawing, it's just withdrawn.
And we don't need a second either. Alright, see you then. Randy?
C, uh, motion to approve omnibus amendment C, adjust for transfer out of fund balance.
Second.
Sent by Jay, Misty, you wanna speak to this one?
Yes, please. Uh, so this is the one where I'm asking for a lot of authority to do what our intention is. Um, so included in the mayor's proposed budget is a multimillion dollar transfer from the general fund to the capital projects fund, which is in line with our CIP document. Uh, that whole transfer counts against our expenditure restraint calculation, so I would like to trim that back just to the amount that we need to in order to still qualify for expenditure restraint, and then the rest of the transfer will be done in future years. This is very similar to say transferring from checking to savings. Um, so there's no levy impact, it's just moving money from one fund to the other. The reason why I want flexibility is that there's a lot of uncertainty still in this calculation, obviously of the amendments that were approved tonight, some of them have impacts on expenditure restraint. There's the town of Madison adjustment, I'm still not sure how that's gonna work out. And I just want a little bit of flexibility in case I calculated something wrong. So I'd like the authority, when you approve this, to do what I need to do to meet that spirit.
Any questions?
So it's the trust Misty amendment?
That it is. Alright, I see nothing, we can vote, all.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So Misty, can you let us know when you are done with, with this, how it's gonna work?
Yeah, so when the final budget document comes out, towards the end of the year, you'll see the dollar amount that it was reduced to.
Alright, seeing nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? That one's approved, next one, Randy?
Motion to approve omnibus amendment D, adjust fee schedule to include missing inaccurate proposed fees.
Second.
Sent by Jay, Misty, what's this?
So when we pass the resolution adopting the budget, we are also adopting the 2023 fee schedule. Uh, when we went back and looked at what was included in the prior version, there were some errors made that we now need to clean up. So there's a handful of departments that all need to have their fee schedules replaced with what's included in the amendment.
Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? Alright, that one is approved. That is all the amendments, so I believe now we'll take a short recess while Misty does calculations, or maybe you don't need a few minutes.
There was one amendment approved that actually affected the levy limit, so I believe we are okay to proceed.
Alright, we don't need to reconsider anything, that's might be a first.
Oh, can I have a question?
You have a question?
Yeah.
What's your question?
So we have only one, there is still some money left, isn't it?
There's like a thou- couple thousand bucks roughly, yeah.
So.
Yep, you wanna see, see to how much money's left, I guess?
Yeah.
You used, what, three eighty-six, I think, of the?
Exactly, so originally there was two thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars, and now we are at, uh, two thousand two hundred and thirty-five. I'll say there's always a little bit of an amount there, cause I also have rounding kinda issues there, so I don't know that we wanna go to the exact dollar. Um, I'll also say, I think it was last year we had the same situation where we made it through the first time and it balanced and we just kinda moved on.
Alright, uh, do we do the closing statements before our final vote then?
Correct.
Alright, then I'll go through the closing statements, we can start in District One and go through. Dave, do you have any closing statements you'd like to make?
All I'd add, you know, and this year the district that Joe and I represent, you know, has a lot of lower income people, uh, that the past two years inflation has hurt them disproportionately. And, uh, so, you know, it's, it's important that we, we do everything we can to keep, you know, essential services and, and spending to, to not be hurting those, hurting those residents, which there's a lot of them in our districts. And so that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, Jay, Joe?
Uh, I surprisingly don't have a lot to say, so I'll, uh, say no statement.
Alright, Julia?
Um, I, I am fine.
Alright, Gabriella?
Uh, I appreciate a lot of the changes that we made in this budget. Um, in terms of, you know, my priorities, I, I always think that environmental responsibility and, and preparing for the future and sustainability in this, in the city is, is extremely important. Um, and, you know, the Swan Creek monitoring funding, the future sustainable vegetation and street medians, additional funding for sustainability plan, um, all, uh, even tree advisory meeting increased, all those really, really go towards that goal. I'm very pleased that we included some additional funding for Southdale in the well, from the well-being fund, I think that's a really good, um, cause another important, you know, consideration for the city is making sure that our, all of our residents are served and, um, their needs are met, and we have some, some areas of town that really need some additional resources. So I'm happy that we're gonna be supporting, um, Southdale in this way. Uh, I do, you know, I, I trust the council and the mayor when they say that we're going to fund the teen center Part Three next year through potential of the TID closure. Um, I'm gonna have to trust that, I think it's really important that we move forward on the teen center study. Um, it, it's an important project and we need to keep it moving forward to see, you know, where it goes. And I also will trust that we might be able to get our urban forester naturals up to full time in the 2024 budget, even though it was not possible this time around. So overall, I'm excited about what's potentially coming in 2023. Uh, as always, there's a lot of work to, yet to be done. Um, and, you know, ultimately we came out the same measure, and I, I believe by, by the, uh, if I recall correctly, I think the taxes might actually go down this year for the average household, um, with this budget. I don't know if, but, but that's based on my, my recollection from Misty's, um, charts. So, uh, hopefully the, some of our taxpayers will see a decrease in their city portion of their taxes.
Julia, you actually do have, wanna make?
Yeah, I forgot, sorry. Uh, I want to thank all my council members that approved some of my amendment, and I thank you very much, even though sometimes we disagree, but at the end I think every one of us want the best for the city, so, um, we have different priority, different point of view, but, um, but at the end, you know, uh, all of us want the same, so, uh, to live in a great city, so, um, thank you for your support.
Alright, Jay?
Yeah, 2023 is gonna be a, an exciting year for us. There's a lot of things that are happening in the city, things that have been a long time coming, and I'm glad to see they're finally happening after, after so many years. So, uh, I'm really looking forward to the things that are being accomplished through this budget and, um, the things that we can look forward to into 2024 and 2025.
Shannon?
No comment. No comment.
Yeah, and you know, I'll be honest, sometimes these budget processes could be kinda frustrating, be, because I'm a process type person, I wanna see plans. I don't wanna see things that are just up in the air and, you know, you know, when I hear comments, oh, it doesn't matter what's in the amendment, and we'll just go from there. I, I just think we're becoming too big of a city, if we wanna be a city, to just have lax rules, processes and procedures. I mean, we have nearly two hundred employees, tens of millions of dollars in a budget, we're not a town anymore. And sometimes I, when I listen to stuff, I'm like, are we a town or are we a city? And I mean, you know, I know we all have priorities, but at some point, we gotta move together as a city. And, you know, I mentioned last week about the different cities that have strategic plans. Middleton, Sun Prairie, Oconomowak, uh, Oak Creek, Jamesville. And when you look at those plans, each one of them, we have shared values, uh, mission and, and goals that we move. mission, and goals that we move forward. And I think sometimes as a council, we got to sometimes put, you know, put aside our, well, we all have individual priorities and come together and how do we move the city forward? And that's going to take having all of us, all the stakeholders, government, citizens, to come together. And I'm hoping that some point we can do that, get a strategic plan, because there's going to be challenges. I mean, you look at where we are now, I mean, like I said, all the stuff that people want to do, and it's great, I agree, it's great. But we're going to have to, we're going to really have to come up with some creative ways to make that happen. And I'll go again, I mean, Southdale, 500 more calls that the fire department and EMS is going to have to do. Already, as I look, you know, talk to EMS director, okay, that's going to be six part-time people that they're going to ask for, at least last time I talked to them, in a rig. Where is that going to come from? And we got a lot of things that are coming together, and it just seems like, oh, well, what, okay, let's just do it. And we got to start planning to see how are we going to make the best on the little resources we have. And I think we also going to have to look at ourselves as a city and say, what type of city do we want to be? You know, we're under 50,000 people as far as our population. What does that mean? That means that we're not an entitlement city. We do not get federal funds from the government directly, like Madison does. Madison has all kinds of resources. So all the stuff that we're saying we're going to need or that we want is basically going to be on the tax levy. Dane County is an entitlement county, but even they only get $1 million pretty much for projects, and the rest goes to homeownership. So there's a lot of stuff out there, and I think that what we're doing now, we are outrunning our ability to actually run the city. Because a lot of this stuff takes infrastructure. And when I say infrastructure, it's streets, it's sewers and everything else, but plus it's people. How are we going to manage grants? You know, these projects, oh, we'll just get grants. Okay, that's fine. Does Misty have the ability to monitor, to report, to write grants? And I just think we need to put, at some point, we need to put it all out there so that we can foresee where are we going, what do we need to do, and how do we work together to make these things work? Because we are going, I mean, let's face it, we're going to be running up against the tax levy. And probably we're going to have to do referendums. So what's important? How are we going to figure that one out? So I just think, like I said, my frustration sometimes is I'm not hearing plans, processes, and I just think sometimes it's just a little, you know, too loose for my liking. But after all meetings, I mean, they turn out to be good. I mean, all the input is great. And I really do, Joe, I really do appreciate the comments that you made about the willingness to work together and everything else like that to get this moving forward. Because I think that's what we're going to have to do, is really work together. So thank you.
Randy?
Yeah, it's late, I'll keep it brief. Thank you. No, not at all, not at all. You had some great comments and I like to echo many of those. I just want to say, first of all, as council president, I appreciate the fact that Mayor Richardson, you, and city administrator Chad Brecklin, and director of finance, Misty Dodge, invited me into the process. And it was an eye-opener for me and to watch, and hopefully I didn't inject too much just as a guest, but to understand how you pulled this together and to keep it within tax levy. It is an interesting process and I appreciate the including me. Because we do live in a great city and I think we all want it to move forward, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I get my, I get comments. Misty's trying to cut me off. I just want to thank all of you for all your work on this. This is the most important thing we do every year. We're up to over a $28 million budget, which is pretty big. And, you know, when you look at the state, in population, we're like 27th or something like that. So we're roughly a top 30 budget in the state when you look at cities, towns, villages. And there's never enough money to do everything that we want to do, unfortunately. There's a lot more that we should do, that I wish we could do, and we can't. But I do want to thank Misty for all your work on this. I mean, this is you and your team do quite a bit of work on this, a lot of the work on this. So thank you for all the work you put in. Thank you, Chad, for your help with this, and really all staff, whether it's department heads and other people that work on this. It takes a lot of people to put this together. It's now close to a 12-month process. When we talk about the TIDS starting in February, it's something that we're working on most of the year, but it is really important. So I just want to thank you for all of that, and I think we're in a good spot going forward. There's going to be big needs, and Jim talked to some of those needs. There's the needs that we haven't talked about, like transportation for the senior center. Those are things that are going to come up, and there's always surprises, whether it's the salt shed needs to get redone or whatever it might be. There's always going to be surprises that come up. So those are not always fun, but when we're in a good spot financially, then it's easier to absorb those things. So again, you know, thank all of you for your work. And with that, Misty, you have some things you want to say?
Just one other piece. So generally, when I talk about how much levy limit capacity is there, I also share with you what our estimated tax rate's going to be and what our average home taxes are going to be. This year, there still continues to be a lot of uncertainty. I'm having a lot of discussion with the varying parties, so I don't feel comfortable sharing those details at this point. But the tax will be finalized in early December, and I will send all that detail out to you as a council, so you know. And obviously, it will be in our tax insert that goes out with each one of the tax bills. So I apologize for not having all the answers. I feel very uncomfortable not having all the answers, but I appreciate your patience.
Misty, would you like us to do a roll call or a voice vote for the resolution?
I believe it's required to be a roll call.
All right. So with that, we will go to a roll call for the final amended city operating budget. Tracy, go ahead.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Rodafrada?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Excellent, we have a budget. All right, thank you, everyone. With that, November 22nd is the next meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Could I just make a brief comment under announcements? Yesterday, we, was the day that the Town of Madison ended, and a chunk of it is now part of Pittsburgh. And it's something that's been 20 years in the making. And for a long, long time, I was watching the city not do anything to make this happen. And I wanted to just personally extend my thanks again to this council, to city staff who have put a lot of time and effort into making this happen over the last two years. I know Tracy's done an awful lot of work and Chad has as well, as well as our police and fire department, as well as the, you know, all of our other departments, the senior center, the parks department. This has been a monumental effort, and I really appreciate the support the council gave me in bashing Madison Metro over the head to get the bus route preserved.